Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, June 17th. It's about 7:30 PM. We're in room 206 of Town Hall. Tonight is a planning, zoning, public hearing and general meeting. We're going to try to make this meeting as efficient as possible because I woke up at 4:45 this morning to go to Le Cours Summit, and I'm rather tired. But it's a pretty packed agenda, but we're going to go through it quick. The first item on the agenda is continuation of flood prevention application number 438, landfilling and regreting application number 546, Joshua and Sherry Soloway at 9 Crane Road, propose to construct a new four-bed Zinga family dwelling, construction of a driveway, retaining walls, and terrace and porch areas, and perform related site development activities within a regulated area, including the regreting of the property and installation of stormwater management. The 1.2 plus-or-minus acre subject property is located on the west side of Crane Road, approximately 630 feet south/east of its intersection with Petri Point Road, and is shown on the accessory map number 60, that's lot 32, in the R1 residential zone. My recollection is that you correct, we opened this hearing on June 6, 2023, and all the -- most of the items in your packet was in that packet, and hopefully we got chance to move to that. Jeremy, Fred, what do we have?
Yep, this hearing was opened by the commission on May 23.
Wow.
It was continued to -- continued by the commission to this evening to address a number of concerns raised by the commission and both the Craig Flaherty of Redness and Mead, who was hired by a neighbor, a neighboring property owner. The applicant did submit some revised materials for the record dated this week. Their final materials were submitted on the 26th, and those materials were reviewed by Joe Canis of Ty &amp; Bond. He sent his third review letter dated June 26th, and Craig Flaherty sent an email for the record dated June 23rd as well, indicating that his comments had been addressed. So the applicant is here tonight, Jim Kasudis of Kasudis Engineering, to present the details and the changes that have been made to the plans and to answer any additional questions that the commission may have this evening.
Mr. Kasudis, welcome. Good evening.
Just put your name and affiliation for the record, sir.
Sure, Jim Kasudis of Kasudis Engineering, representing the owners of 9 Crane Road, Darien, Connecticut. Since you want to make this a quicker hearing, then it should be. I don't know if I should go through the technical aspects of the Redness and Mead letter that we received two weeks ago, but it had to do with how we analyzed our drainage system and basically based on the neighboring comments of flooding conditions on number 9 Crane Road and number 15 Crane Road and in general in the roadway. We looked closely at the property, we looked closely at the surrounding properties, the low point, the number 9 and 15 share. So we redid our analysis and enhanced our drainage plan, and this is what we submitted back to the town and Craig Flaherty of Redness and Mead. As Fred just mentioned, we had a response back from Craig Flaherty on June 23rd.
The most important person's analysis is Joe Canis. He works at the town.
That's correct.
He said it, sorry.
I was going to get there.
Okay, that's okay.
So whatever items Craig had in his letter, we had addressed adequately and plus, we can share the architectural plans. There was an issue that came up with the height of the building. It was over by .3 feet. We addressed that by lowering the first -- the entire house by .6 feet, which is 7.2 inches, basically. So currently it complies. To Craig and our communication, Joe Canis also agreed that our plan meets the town of Darien standards, and that is where we are today. I just have to just comment on one thing at the bottom of Mr. Flaherty's email. He asks that independently, the planning and zoning consulting engineer reviews the final ASBILT and certification letter from us, and we don't have an objection to that. I mean, that's standard process through many towns in the area. With that, I would answer any questions.
Why don't you go over the plan and tell us what changed, the most recent thing?
I have the old plan in the back. Would you like to start with that?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
Before and after, right?
I figured it would help.
Perfect.
So the residence and the driveway has not changed the location of them. We said the residence dropped .6 feet, which allowed for us to drop the immediate grades around the house by that much, just to make everything balance. We continue to have -- well, we had a rain garden on the south side of the property. There's a patio in the rear and the associated grading of everything else around the house. There was no regrading proposed on the west side of the property in the previous plan, and there is none proposed today. So what it looks like today, again, the residence is in the middle of the lot, the driveway hasn't changed, the elevation dropped by .6 feet, the patio in the rear remains. The grading along the house remains, nothing on the western side of the property is being proposed to be regraded. We elongated, we extended the rain garden as you had requested last time. They made it longer. We added, and we added two more drainage systems for the driveway and part of the front of the house in the driveway along Crane Road. We also added more subsurface drainage structures below the rain garden. That's technically what's -- well, we also added, because we analyzed the entire area that drains into the low point between the two properties, we added two yard drains at the north side of the property to collect land runoff, basically, from the neighboring property and direct it into the subsurface drainage system under the rain garden to assist with any water that would be migrating into the low point. And by doing that, we show that there's no impact to the neighboring property.
So at the end of the day, this thing's -- the water retention system for the property is way oversized.
Yes, you can say, you can say it's way oversized based on today's standards for the town of Darien. I think based on Redness and Mead's comments, we took it to the next level. If we do want to have a uniform standard across the town, I recommend, I don't know if it's your jurisdiction or if it's staff, to amend the drainage report, to apply these standards in it, so every engineer knows what the exact standard is and how to design these drainage systems. But anyway, that's besides the point. We're dealing with a particular application today.
That's a problem, yeah. Okay. And then, I don't think I have that plan, but on that plan, the new text box or the new zoning box says what the height is?
I don't know that.
Unless it's on paper and stamped by you. No offense, I don't believe you.
It will be either on our plan or the surveyor's plan showing the heights. I believe with the original submission was the surveyor that had the height on there.
Because I got, this one's dated Monday, June 19th. Right, this is what we got in our packet of the week, isn't it?
There's letters in the email.
Yeah, there was additional materials submitted for the record and distributed to commission members to you today in an email.
Oh, I was at a Le Cours Summit. Le Cours Summit, sorry.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Yeah.
We got like nine revised plans.
Yeah.
One of them had just a house in the top of it. That was it.
You're looking forward to the --
The box.
Correct.
Box.
Yeah.
And the revised plan from the architect shows the height.
And that came by email today, too? Have you guys had that staff?
It did, yes. That was also distributed to you today as well, email.
Okay. And it's, all right, just show me where it says the heights are. Okay. Let's get the height overall, the way Darien measures the height of the building. Okay. Okay. Question?
I'm looking forward to hearing if there's any comments from neighbors, additional comments.
Is Joe Canis here tonight?
No.
Joe Canis is not here tonight, but I do note for the record, and I think I kicked it off, that he submitted his latest, Joe Canis submitted his latest comments dated June 26th, and he notes that all of his previous comments have been addressed and no further information is required or requested from his office.
Okay. And you have no problem having ASBILT serving at the end, right?
That is correct. We don't, we're not opposed to that.
Mike? Okay. Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application? Please come forth and state your name and affiliation for the record if you have in mind.
Jennifer Arrington at 116. I did submit a letter, so we're the ones who hired Craig Flaherty.
Thank you.
And I didn't see, actually, the change in the building height, because your, the answer you had provided for that one, when you did the answer back to Craig's comments, you just said the application is being presented to the P&amp;Z Commission as a special permit application. Based on the proposed grading in the FEMA flood zone, we feel that the residence's height meets the minimum criteria. So you didn't actually say there were any changes made to the height?
It's not a special permit anyway, right?
No, it would have to be a variance if they wanted a change in height.
We've been working with Mr. Jones since last Thursday.
Who's Mr. Jones?
The designer of the house, whose plans you just looked at, to respond to Mr. Flaherty's comments. So Ms. Arrington is correct that that was their original response to Mr. Flaherty's comment. As staff, we called Jim Kasudis. Steve Jones said, "You need to figure this out sooner rather than later," and that's why the revised plans were done over the weekend, responding to Mr. Flaherty's comment.
Regardless, they have to be in conformity.
That's correct.
So the plans that we have in file today are in conformity?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. I guess I checked the uploaded, and all I saw was the new site plan and the new drainage analysis. I didn't see any new.
And you checked, you checked the upload when? At what time? Today or last week?
It would have been today. I checked it earlier today. Because that's actually when I called to say that I hadn't seen Craig Flaherty's June 23rd email.
Okay.
Maybe the applicant could hold up the plans.
And I didn't see it, so I just wanted to, otherwise, I'm so sorry, I don't mean to waste anyone's time.
No, no, it's not at all. It's, we want the plans, too. I mean, it's, if they're uploaded and they're in the office, you know, before any resolution gets done, we have to make sure we have them, because every resolution says the plans dated, you know, today's date, and they're attached.
Yeah, I mean, if they have been changed, so does that mean that the midpoint of the roof elevation, because Craig Flaherty, when he, when he sent the letter, he, I guess, showed his work on what everything was from the surveyors. Does that mean the midpoint of the roof elevation, it said here was 43.9 feet, so that's dropped .6 now?
Jim, why don't you put that up on the pedestal if you have in mind?
Sure.
And then if you can show us and the woman at the podium, that height difference?
The midpoint here to the roof changed from 30.3 to 29.9.
And that, that plan's dated what? There's a date in probably the lower right-hand corner?
623.
623. And it's also, not to take it away from you, but it's also reflected in the site plan, the new first floor elevation is 17.4, when the old one was 18.0.
And the new one's dated what?
623.
Okay, so that's what, 623 is Friday?
So, oh, this one I saw, the new with the.
So this one has a first floor elevation that's, that dropped .6 feet from the old site plan.
Okay.
So just, we're all on the same page. That may say it dropped. We don't really, I mean, math is math. You can say it dropped, the whole house dropped, but just make sure that the other one, which shows the house.
Correct, and then, right, so we dropped the first floor on the site plan, and the architectural plans show the height, the 29.9 feet.
And then the zoning box is going to be on either one of those plans and/or the survey?
Correct.
Because that's what, I guess, Craig Flaherty got it from the zoning location survey. He said dated January 31st, 2023, and that's where he got the average proposed grade, the existing grade, and that's how he figured out the math, so.
Yeah, I think they revised it a few days later.
So our only further point was that, I don't know if you saw the email we sent or copies of it, is that we're a little hesitant about just asking for a review of the ASBILT and the drainage certification based on the sheer amount of items that Craig found. I mean, it ranged from using the incorrect number for total area to the incorrect number for proposed impervious area by 2,500 feet, to using the wrong percolation rate, to using, to not modeling the area correctly, to using the non-standard way in which, how the water actually seeps in.
Right.
I mean, it was all over the board. So we were wondering if it would be possible to actually have the town engineer do the ASBILT and the drainage certification, just because we feel like there's a little bit lack of trust, and also an inherent conflict of interest in having someone certify their own work, especially when the original one, I mean, he did, I mean, we've got a video of him standing up here attesting that there would be no impact to any of the neighbors and that it would actually help the neighbors, and that was in his previous design, which didn't include the drainage around the front, the extra drainage at the side, the new drains around the back, the berm that's now been added. And they also attested that the height was only 27.5 feet several times and said they could have even made it taller.
Okay.
So we're just a little nervous about then having the same person kind of certify that everything's been done. And we also see that with engineering, it is such detailed work that oftentimes you actually need someone to do the whole analysis to actually find what's wrong, like a cursory review, because it's such detailed work, is not always adequate to actually be able to find these things, so.
Who is the surveyor on this one?
Surveyor here is Arkamon Land Surveyors.
Okay.
So you have Arkamon's the land surveyor. They will draw up the final survey showing where the drainage system is, where the lines are. Again, that's not the engineer drawing that, that would be the surveyor who draws that.
Okay.
The engineer would be responsible for overseeing the contractor who's out there, that's Soloway's hire, the guy who's with the shovel and the bulldozer or whatever equipment, who's going to be handed the specs, and then they're responsible for taking pictures, being out there when it's done, talking to the surveyor. So it's a whole team thing, it's not just one, it's not just one person, it's the contractor, the engineer, the surveyor, working together.
Okay, that's great.
And then what happens is, our office will get the ASBILTS, not only the plan, but we'll get a certification from the engineer. This happens, I don't want to be cliche, but it happens literally all day, every day, where someone's doing a small house project, something that doesn't even need to go to the commission, and they submit the plan and the written certification. Usually it's Rick Talamelli from our office, who then, the first thing he does is take boat and hops in his car to visit the site and make sure everything's perfect, and then he creates a checklist for the applicant, and some applicants.
But you're saying it's really the surveyor that actually goes out and actually creates the.
The survey will draw it, our office will check it, and they won't be able to move into their home till everything's shipshape.
Okay, that's wonderful.
They can't move in till they get a CFO, without getting a CFO till these guys sign up.
And just, there's also another critical checkpoint at the foundation point. So when all this drainage work is done and all the foundation work is done, no other building can happen until that mini-process happens, so there's an.
Okay, that's wonderful. Just because it just made us all just a little nervous about.
Exactly, so there is another touch point, a very critical touch point after they kind of come out of the ground.
Okay. And then the last thing was just the maintenance and operation plan?
Let me just interrupt one second. I think what the engineer said is that he'd be okay if Canis, which is the outside firm, would look at the ASBILT before it got filed, right?
We could certainly work on arranging that with the applicant.
Okay, I think you said yesterday already.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
That was, you said that Craig said in the last sentence, he wants, you know, the outside third-party person to look at this, the outside survey and sign off on this.
Yes, we are okay with that, as long as it's part of the town process review.
Correct, correct. Because usually we have Darren Ostifay and do it, but Darren Ostifay didn't do this one.
Right, usually Rick's been sitting in in terms of going out to the site, you know, because it's certainly time-consuming. You could drive to the site, you walk around, you compare it to what's here, you go back to the office, you write up your findings.
We don't care if it's Rick, if it's Joe.
Thank you. We're good. So ma'am, to answer your question, once this survey comes in, there's going to be another professional set of eyes looking at it twice.
That will actually compare. Okay, that's great. And then the last thing I just talked to Craig about today, there's a maintenance and operation list, I guess that at the end has also a log of the operation and maintenance. And I guess I just asked Craig, it seemed as if the additional things they put on, the berm and the swale, had it been included in, I guess, the checklist of things to look at, like the drains and the rain garden? And he said, you know, he probably would have added the swale, but it wasn't, you know, as big of a, you know, he said he would have added it to it, but it, I'm not saying to stop, just as a, I guess, a note or a point of interest, something to look at for the operation. I guess because these stormwater management systems, I guess, have to be maintained fairly well.
Well, stormwater management gets filed, right?
Yeah, but they're not going to, the log of it and checking over is not going to be filed with the town anywhere.
Oh, no, no, I didn't meant, I just meant, just as a note, just to add the extra, the additional features that they had added to it.
Yeah.
That will get added. If that stormwater, if the operations plan changed, that's going to, if it has to get changed because of the new plans, it has to get changed.
Okay.
But eventually that document gets filed on in town plans, too.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to this application? Okay, anything else, Jim? You all set?
All set, thank you.
Okay. Motion to close? Mike makes a motion, Amy makes a second, all the three of you. Hearing, the hearing, the hearings closed on that application. We'll deliberate this probably before.
Probably deliberate on the 11th, hopefully decided.
Would I?
Yeah.
Would I? The last time we looked at it is we got the square footage of the house and all that stuff.
Yep. Just leave them in the hallway, jump that side.
Okay. Next on the agenda is special permit application number 330, site plan, Northeast Hardwood at 170 Nuroton Avenue. Propose to establish a new custom wood products and hardwood furniture company with a workshop area in the first and second floor space formerly occupied by William Seymour and Associates. The 0.14 plus-or-minus acre subject property is located on the east side of Nuroton Avenue, approximately 160 feet south of its intersection with West Avenue, and it's shown on accessory map number 40 as lot number 29 in the service business SB zone. Gentlemen, what do we have?
Sure, this is in the space formerly occupied by William Seymour and Associates. It's the front building, literally right on Nuroton Avenue. It's been there for a long time. The proposal is for a use in the service business zone, what we've considered to be a home improvement contractor, home improvement supplier, and other similar service contractors. In this case, you read from the application that it's basically building, constructing furniture, and selling that furniture from the property. In the back of the property now is a vet's office. It's really two separate properties, but it functions as one with shared parking. You have in your file a letter from one of the neighbors, Mr. Brady of Nine Palmer, that was emailed out to you earlier today, and description of the business was also in the file. It was a little bit of outdoor activity. Most of the changes to the property will be interior. There's a first and second floor. Hours of operation are noted in the application, and Andre Argenbo, correct?
And you waived the traffic study.
We did waive the traffic study due to the size of the building, the nature of what they're doing.
And anything else need to be waived, like stormwater management or that stuff?
It's likely stormwater management because they're not constructing anything exterior. Using the same parking lot, same building, no bump out of the building, no expansion of the building. They're just going to redo the facade, put a new sign up. Still need to go to ARB, but no, no expansion of the building.
So as standard with your, with our special permits, you're allowed to waive certain items, and you waived in the instance, standard with other special terms that we may see.
A stormwater waiver was requested by the applicant and is included as part of the record, and the application was also referred out to the fire marshal's office. Bob Bush submitted comments for the record dated June 14th, where he notes some requirement for egress from, from both floors from the back of the building.
I'm going to get into that later, that seemed to me, but we can talk about that in a little bit. Sir, welcome.
Thank you.
Please just state your name and affiliation for the record.
Peter Andre Argenbo, Northeast Hardwood.
Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
There you go. So William Seymour surveyed my house way back when, and he went out, he moved. So you're going to take his building over?
With your permission.
We're nice people up here.
Yeah, well, I look forward to working with you.
There we go. So what are you going to do there? It looks like you're going to make a showroom and offices and assembly space. Your narrative talks about the lower level and the other level. To me, it's really first floor, second floor. It doesn't have a basement, right?
Well, the first floor, in my mind, is the basement. It's a sort of street level. The second floor is obviously the second level.
Okay. So have you ever been to the one that's in Mount Kisco?
Oh, I have, yeah.
Yeah, me too.
So I've sold, his name is Mauricio, slabs in the past directly from my mill.
Yeah, he's got, he's, he's.
He's a wheeler and a dealer. He's got his guys running around. This would be a similar, but not quite the same thing.
Yeah, he's got a big operation there.
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't you give us a quick, five-minute overview of your business? The one word that Jeremy used, which I kind of may switch it, and you can tell if I'm right or wrong, he said manufacturer. I would really call it assembling.
Yeah, that's right. I would say the manufacturing, the industrial nature of my work goes on in an industrial yard miles from here, in Stanford, Connecticut, basically right on the New York-Stanford line. And most of my wood comes from large tree providers, service providers, and they are in a position where, when they have a really, really big one, it costs them a lot of man-hours, a lot of time. It's very labor-intensive to actually cut those large trees up with chainsaws. And so they're in a position where they'll go ahead and provide me this large timber, they'll bring it to my yard, and I will mill it up there. And a lot of this is really special wood. It's, some of it's historic wood. All of it technically has history, so it's all, almost all beautiful. We have 26 different species of hardwood right now, over 500 slabs. I've sent furniture to over 20 different states in the U.S., and our client base is really robust in the Fairfield County market, and I think this store would be a storefront, would be a perfect place to really advance this business and meet with, you know, designers, meet with clients, be able to, you know, have wood and legs all in the same place with a number of finished product upstairs on that second level, which would really allow us to show our clients not only the quality of the work, but some of the little table legs, you know, the finishes, and, you know, samples from, you know, past trees that, you know, they could, you know, build into their home, basically. So whether it's countertops or, you know, desks, it could be kitchen tables, it could be, you know, side tables, it can be flooring technically, although that's not really our market by any means. But sometimes people want, you know, massive, wide, really wide blanks, and we can do that for them. Most of that stuff would have to be really, you know, sent to a proper, you know, shop where it would be manufactured into that. But most of what we would be doing is making custom tables, and we would be attaching the legs to those tables, and we would be applying finish.
Okay.
Can you speak to any, like, the machines that are going to create? Can you speak to any noise, like the machines that are going to create a lot of noise? Describe that in a little more detail.
Absolutely. So the prominent machine that we use is a sander, so a other that makes noise. Every now and then, there will be small cuts made to the very, very ends of the slabs, but it's very minimal, and that can actually be done, and is more often done at our industrial yard, but nothing more than just a skill saw. So that's really the most, you know, the loudest piece of equipment. There'd be a sander, and then there'd be a drill, and that's about it.
And where do you envision those machinery being used? Indoors?
All indoors exclusively, no power tools outdoors. And the ultimate reality is that that basement, that first level, is really built into.
Built inside the home.
Yeah, so, I mean, there is not a lot of above ground, you know, by nature in that, in that actual, you know, area. So a lot of that noise will, you know, emanate into the ground, and there won't be a lot of noise. Even in my shop now in Newport, there are two different people that live on either side, one of whom lives four feet from the eight-inch brick in my shop. And Rob and I are very good friends, and we don't have any issue whatsoever. And I provided his contact to Jeremy earlier today, you know, he wants to serve as a reference. And then the other neighbor opposing the back of the shop is a good friend as well. And neither one of them, you know, have any reason to complain about, about the noise, so.
So we don't get into the aesthetics on this board that goes to the ARB, but I mean, I kind of sort of like the idea of the garage doors in the front.
Yeah.
So in the front of the building, is there a difference in what you might do in the front of the building versus the back of the building? Like, does the sanding get done in the back against the berm, and then the painting gets done in the front, or how do you envision that happening?
Yeah, I would have more of the shop, sort of in the back area, and then more finished product and more of the actual, like, you know, the varnishing going on in the front, almost by design, because then, you know, that would allow people driving by to go ahead and see the products that we're working on. So it's all sort of, the nice thing about, if we were to put really beautiful garage doors in there, it'd be wood and glass, and I'd use the nice kind of glass, and I would use walnut, and, you know, they would look very pro. But being able to just push a button and to be able to have those doors retract up into the actual, you know, facility itself, versus opening and then constricting the parking, the traffic flow on either side of the building, like they do now, there would be less ability for cars to move by, and it would just be cumbersome, so.
Mount Kisco's got garage doors.
Yeah.
You go by, you can see a table sitting there, and then you end up stopping, and you go buy a table.
That's the, that's the play.
Yeah, that happened to me.
Yeah.
But I didn't buy it.
Okay, all right. Maybe we could control you next time, especially if it's local.
I'm not going to tell my wife you're moving in, if you don't mind.
Cut your deal.
One quick thing you said proposed act, it says you will not have a dumpster in our business operations. What do you do with the empty paint cans, the empty varnish cans?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, most of that stuff, you know, I dispose of, you know, and I bring it either to the dump, but it's really not that much trash. The most of the trash, most of the bark, most of the sawdust, most of the end cuts, that all happens at the industrial yard.
Right.
So it's really not that much, and nor would it really ever be. If it got to that point, it would be more likely that we would do more to stand up a better facility for dealing with all that extra waste material at our industrial yard, and then transport it to Darien.
Do you, does your varnish, I mean, I may be getting too technical, but does your varnish come in the 55-gallon drums, like when I was in shop class, or does it come in regular one gallon?
One gallon, yeah. General finishes is almost all of what we use. The VOC content isn't too crazy, so, you know, it's not like, you know, anything's, you know, truly, you know, highly chemicals.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I'm just worried about paint cans.
He couldn't put that in the dump anyway, though, in a dumpster.
Well, you take it, you can take them to Darien.
You can take them to the dump, but he couldn't, if he were to get like a Darien disposable guy to come and pick it up like at the back of Palmer's, they won't take paint.
Okay.
They don't like the paint cans. But you can clean them out, actually, with turpentine.
Do reuse them, yeah.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say, and reuse them, so.
What about just the regular usage of, like, the upstairs office and reception? Like, I imagine bottles of water, you know, you're going to be giving people, there's like paper just in the natural office use. How are you going to get rid of that without any garbage? Or are you planning on having, like, small?
Well, I'd like trash cans.
Trash?
Yeah, I mean, just general.
And then you'll just haul it away yourself?
Yeah, I mean, in, in Darien, I'm not sure if there's a service where two trash cans would, you know, possibly be picked up if it's paid for. I haven't truly looked into it, but our industrial yard has trash, and it wouldn't be difficult for me, you know, on a rotational basis to, you know, dump the big garbage bags in my pickup and take them to Stanford. So it, trash, whatever you guys want me to do, I'll, I'll play within the confines, by all means.
Then the big thing is, how many, I mean, I know there's 18 parking spaces on the lot, right? So if I'm driving by on a Saturday and I want to go there, you said you have three, you wrote, I think, the three parking spaces?
Well, that was largely, those three parking spaces I'm referring to when we're doing loading and unloading. There, and I don't mean to be correcting you, but to my knowledge, there are 16 parking spaces on the property, of which there's 50% use, basically allocated to each of the businesses, so we would each get eight parking spaces.
Yeah, this survey's not, there's actually 18 because there's two extra tandem ones that they put in, but you're technically right.
I'm just, I'm not trying to.
That's fine. No, that's okay.
But, yeah, so, I mean, parking I don't foresee as being very much of an issue, just because of the fact that the vet, they hardly ever have more than two or three cars there. You know, they're not open on Saturdays and Sundays, you know, so if, I only anticipate this getting busy on a Saturday during the summer, or during maybe the fall or the spring, where, you know, there are a lot of people happen to be in town, they're setting up their homes, whatever it is, you know, and that could be busy on a Saturday. But again, the vet isn't open, so that would give us access to, like you said, 18 parking spaces, which is more than enough that we're going to need for, you know, this little business. But, you know, in terms of, you know, those three parking spaces that we'd mentioned, you know, the idea would be largely relegating the unloading and the loading to those three parking spaces.
Yep.
So that way, we wouldn't be infringing on sort of the community of the parking lot with the animal hospital, basically, so.
Just, just for your knowledge, if you're going to have a truck that says, like, you know, Darien North woodworking on it?
I don't.
Okay, you can't park that visible from the street.
Understood.
Like, there's one in town, Hollitree Self-Storage has got one, and it says Hollitree Self-Storage. They, they park their truck way in the back, so it's not visible from the street.
Yeah.
So it's not, you can't have an advertisement as a truck. So I guess if there's 16 or 18 spaces, whatever it is, it's 50/50, it's not just three.
That's correct.
So he just went from three spaces to either nine or eight, or whatever the number is. Okay.
That's right.
I think that's pretty much it for me. Anything?
Does it require any ventilation?
So I'll have an air handler in there, absolutely, for dust and particulates. But it's one thing that, those filters, you just sock them out, and, you know, the nice ones have a little light that tells it goes red when it starts to get, otherwise you just got to look. My one doesn't have a light, but I could buy a nice one.
And then, and then no interference with it, because that's really tight there with the sidewalk and the doors, and you're not going to interfere with the sidewalk and the passer, you know, putting anything out on the sidewalk, or?
Nope. I planned to do a red brick and make it inviting and nice, and, you know, there's some sort of odd-looking, you know, greenery there that, you know, looks a little dilapidated. It'd be nice to be able to pull the truck sort of right up into that sort of area temporarily, move off a slab, you know, move it back into the parking lot. But, yeah, no. The doors, if we were able to get those garage doors working, then there'd be no obstruction whatsoever.
There's a brand-new gazebo directly across the street from Darien Commons, so if you walk out your front door, you hit a set of stairs, you go down to a dog park.
It's nice. I got a dog, too.
An Aswan, an Equinox.
Yeah, yeah, an Equinox. You have $300 a month.
And 122 partners.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask anyone in the general public, is there, and there's a building behind you that blocks everything behind you, right?
Uh, that's the animal hospital.
Right, okay. Is there anybody in the general public ready to speak to this application? Oh, we don't see anybody. Okay. Oh, please, sir, welcome.
Welcome.
Why don't you come up to the podium and state your name and affiliation for the record, if you'd mind?
Damien Battersby, I own Park Animal Hospital, the building behind it. Nice to meet you. My question has to do with trucks carrying slabs in. We have really narrow ingress, egress out of that blockage with big trucks through there, affecting my clients coming in and out, is my main concern.
And I can speak to that.
Why don't you, you ask us the question, then I'll ask Kim the question.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
So my concern is having, being that it's going to be a manufacturing or whatever.
Light assembly.
Yes, light assembly. There's going to be trucks bringing products in, and my concern is the, it's a really narrow in and out of that parking lot, if you've ever been there.
Yep.
And if they're unloading and loading, how is that going to affect my client flow through there?
Let me ask you this. What time is your vet hospital open?
Eight to five.
Eight to five, okay.
Monday through Friday.
So if he brought in his trucks and slabs before 8:00 a.m., would that be a problem for you?
No, wouldn't affect this at all.
Fantastic. Okay, so you're eight to five, so let me see if I can ask Kim if he can do his unloading, unloading before 8:00 or after 5:00. That works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
It's reality TV, you gotta stay out of camera.
Yeah, that would work for us. And just, just to go back to the main point of those three parking spaces, the reason I wrote that in there was so one truck could actually park along those three parking spaces, one truck taking up three parking spaces, and therefore always allowing thoroughfare through that route with plenty of room on either side. So in that instance, it wouldn't be three trucks. Again, it would just be the one truck.
But you, there's a wall there, so you got to drive into the space and then go parallel, so you can have passage by you.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a wall there on one side, and then there's another space, and then there's the Park Animal Hospital sign that sits right there. It's a big, you know, sign that sits on, right on roadside.
We're talking here, so your trucks are going to come in, go around, park in this spot.
Exactly, right, exactly. And so we would be before that, that partition, and what it would do is, it would most certainly allow, and I've done it with my truck, and I made sure of it, that we could get the truck into that spot, or along those spots, either facing out or facing in, and have a slab be removed. So the only, it would only be momentarily, while they were on a mobile sawhorse, that it would be moving from the truck into the actual shop area. And it wouldn't be more than, say, 20 seconds, that it would be, you know, sort of in transit between the truck and, and the shop.
And where's, where's the loading door for the shop? Are you going to be in the front? It's not in the back, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's no entrance in the back. It has to be going in and out of the front. So I was thinking of having one sort of be the entrance for the shop area, and then the other sort of the entrance more for the finishing area. So one would be more or less unobstructed.
Okay.
In a, in a situation like that, that's not a designated spot for your organization, correct? It's 50/50, so you have allocation. So you might have a customer parked in one of those spots at the time you're trying to make an unload or a load. So I guess it, I guess it's, in a perfect world, when they're, they're at your disposal at all times, you, I could see that being out of the pathway. But in the case where your truck comes up and you're unloading, and one of those spots is full, it might make more sense to try to do a.
Before 8:00.
Yeah, staging of your, of that type of work before or after the eight to five window.
Yeah. I'd always work with you. That'd be my promise. If you, if you were like, this is unreasonable, I'd be like, totally understood, I'll fit within the bounds.
The bounds, not so much, there was just big trucks.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a, it's not a huge truck. It's a Dodge Ram 1500, and I probably wouldn't be able to ever do a bigger one than that, because my place in Newport's got a tiny little spot, so. It would be no, no monster, you know, big, you know, no CDLs would be coming in here.
What's the longest, what's the longest dining table you've ever made?
I made a 20 footer.
Wow.
Yeah, out of white oak. So that was quite the love of labor. I don't anticipate doing another 20 footer unless it's for the right price. I learned that one the hard way, because every time you got to move it, you need seven of your friends to come over. It's a lot of, a lot of hassle.
What's your average length? Is it 12, 10, 8?
Eight to 12 feet. Yeah, 12, 14 is a big one at this point, and I would say eight is an average size, 92 inches, 105 inches. I get a lot of those.
So it fits in the back of your?
Always, almost. Yeah, actually, my 1500 carried the 20. I just have roof racks on it, and so I suspend it five foot out the back, and it comes about a foot over the front of the truck.
Cool, okay.
It's about a 17-foot-long truck, more or less.
Okay, anything else? We're all set? You're square?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're going to make your delivery, we're trying to make your delivery time before 8:00 a.m. and after 5:00.
Yeah, absolutely.
For a big 20-foot.
Absolutely. That's done. Yeah, absolutely.
Got it, all right.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else like to speak to this application? Hearing none, you're all square, right?
Sir, thank you.
Did I miss anything?
Yep.
Fantastic. Motion to close? Adam makes the motion this time. Mike makes the second. Sorry, all the favor.
No worries.
One nothing. All right, moving right along. Thank you. We'll deliberate this probably next week or something like that.
The 11th, deliberate the 11th, maybe decide at the 11th, maybe, if not the 25th.
Yeah, this is kind of, no offense, kind of straightforward.
Okay.
Okay. Just kind of make sure all the stuff that we talked about makes sense. We'll be square. So we're, with that one, all right. Moving on, next item on the agenda. You're more than welcome to stay and hang out and watch if you want to.
Oh, my God, all right.
It is kind of fun.
I appreciate it.
All right. Next, I'm going to enter coastal site plan review number 357A, flood zone, provincial application number 408A, Western Land, Western Island LLC, 29 Toki Trail, propose to construct a 19-by-20 terrace in Purgla, Purgla, along the western edge of the existing tennis court on the property, and formally decide to involve activities within regulated areas. The 1.15 plus minus acre subject property is located on the west side of Toki Trail, approximately 1,000 feet south of its intersection with Canoe Trail, and is shown on assessment map number 69 as lot 40A in the R1 zone. I was just curious, on this one, to build a 36, a 18 by, was it 18 by 20, 19 by 20 patio? That's, you don't need a building permit for that, right?
You don't. You would need a building permit for the Purgla. This is right on the water. This is a unique property, and there's a tennis court on the property.
And that is it.
And it's beautiful, right on the water, but, so they're putting a Purgla, a seating area that you, before, after playing tennis, or just watching people play, you can just sit in the shade and relax. And so that worked because it's right on the water, and I believe it's also in the flood zone, Fred.
It is.
Yeah, so, that's why, see, even though it's, my understanding is to construct the Purgla could take a few days. The masonry for the patio, you know, could take about a week or two weeks, but from a construction standpoint, very minor, because you're just working in a small area, probably about the size of this.
Is it an active flood zone where the Purgla can get pulled up?
Well, they're going to have to design it right. Alyssa Fournier is here to explain a little bit more about the proposal. We did refer to the state of Connecticut DEEP. They submitted their comments dated June 21st. They talked a little bit about.
Listeria.
Listeria, yes, thank you, and what, what, because the Purgla's going to have plantings on it.
Right.
So DEEP had some comments about what type, what species of listeria to use. We also referred to the professional engineer, Joe Canis, and he submitted comments dated June 15. Fred, is that it?
Those are the two major. Yeah, those are the major things. Joe Canis did have a few concerns relative to the building of the, of the patio and structure within the flood zone, and Alyssa provided some additional information for the record on June 23rd that was distributed to you, to you in that email today and uploaded to, to the electronic file. And other than that, you know, pretty straightforward. This particular property was, was subject to a prior, prior planning zoning approval back in July of 2021. There was a house on the property at that time. The proposal was to demo that house and build a replacement house on the site. The house has been demoed. The only thing on the site now is a tennis court. However, the property owner never moved forward with that project, and instead at this time is just proposing this minor patio and Purgla. But Alyssa's here this evening to answer any questions that you may have, and I'll take it from there.
Welcome, welcome.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Fournier. I work for Michael Trapp Inc., and I'm here representing our customers.
our customers at 29 Tokenin Trail.
It's just so swell, I was trying to see why we had to have you guys remember, now I get it, okay. Thank you, welcome.
We've also worked across the street for our customers at their other property, 36. So essentially, we're proposing to put in a slightly raised bluestone patio. It'll be 20 by 18 and then there'll be an oak frame pergola on top, which will be 20 by nine, so essentially it'll cover half the patio. Very light land disruption around, around the patio. Soil will be brought up a little bit on the backside just to feather the grade there, but we won't be disrupting any of the rest of the site. Should be a fairly quick project, maybe factoring in inspections and stuff, a few weeks, maybe a month depending on how the timing works out with getting the necessary building inspections, weather, you know, et cetera. But that's, that's our plan. I don't know if you want me to, if you need me to discuss any of that.
I did ask Alyssa prior to the meeting about the comment from DEEP about the listeria.
And that we can, we'll definitely adhere to the recommendation by DEEP and we can change.
Different kind of listeria?
Yeah, there's native and invasive, they just don't wanna use invasive.
Okay. I did a building with listeria that I was all into, okay. This is just certified engineers' plans, but this is, this is building.
We'll need a certification for the building official because it's in the flood zone, so Alyssa's aware of that, but don't need...
Yeah, you know, I have engineered stamped drawings here and he's kept into consideration, he's gone on and reviewed the flood standards that Darien has listed for that zone and...
They just wanna make sure the pergola's attached to the slab and the slab and the pergola don't land up in, in the long line.
Yeah, no, we don't wanna do that. Everything, essentially, the footing will be pinned to the, there'll be the walls which are pinned to the slab. And the whole pergola is pinned into the, to the walls themselves, which go down all the way to the footing, so.
That's building department, so that's above our pay grade. You guys have any questions?
Are you gonna clean up the roadside on the front of the wall?
We will clean it up as much as needed.
Because the house across the street looks beautiful and then when I walk past it, the tennis court looks beautiful, but then the wall kinda looks like it's in a little bit of disrepair.
At the moment, there's not a proposed to clean up that wall, we can definitely discuss with our customer if, you know, they want us to enhance sort of the face of that property. I know they're, they're very much enjoying their house across the street and I'm sure they wanna look at their nice piece of property on the other side as well.
It's not part of the project.
Otherwise, no.
Pretty much.
I'm sure they'll get there. I'm guessing, they're spending all this money, they're gonna get there.
Yeah, no, they've been gradually, sort of trying to...
I saw it go down and then I saw the tennis court go up instead of a house, then I was like, "Oh, I wonder what's happening."
Yeah, they decided, they started a family and kind of decided they wanted to think about what they wanted to do on that property rather than rush into building.
Any questions?
Nope, that's it.
Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application? Hearing done, anything else we missed?
Nope.
Okay, so, motion, motion to close? Amy makes the motion. Yes, she was in the game. Adam gets the second, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
They'll hear back, we're seeing it in a couple weeks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next item up for bid, this is a big fat one.
That one's good.
Oh, no, this one's, alright, I'll open this one, this one gets planted. Nice. Next item on the agenda, Special Permit Application Number 60S, Site Plan, Flood Damage Prevention Application Number 208C, Country Club of Darien, 300 Mansfield Avenue, Propose to replace an existing pump house and irrigation system located in the southeast of the clubhouse for purposes of golf course irrigation and perform related site development activities within a regulated area. This subject property is located on the east side of Mansfield Avenue approximately 1,250 feet south of its intersection with Middlesex Road and is shown on assessment map number five as Lot 40 in the R-2 zone. Mrs. Barsante?
I am recusing myself from this application.
Okay, so Mrs. Barsante has recused from this application, so that means we do not have a court.
Yeah, so we're gonna open it tonight, the notices were properly done, we're gonna continue this application to the commission's next regularly scheduled meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, Tuesday, July 11th, 7:30 PM in this room.
So if anyone's here for the Country Club of Darien's application to put a pump house in the golf course, it is being continued to Tuesday, July 11th, okay? Alright, next item on the agenda, this one gets put up here, this one comes up here. Next item on the agenda, Coastal Site Plan Review Number 374, Flood Damage Prevention Application Number 179A, Land Filling and Regrading Application Number 549, Mark and Stasha Cohen at 114 Five, 114 Five Mile River Road, Propose to raise existing residents on the site and construct a new five bedroom, single-family dwelling, Construction of Retaining Wells, Retaining Walls, Terraces, Metapool and Cabana and perform related site development activities within regulated areas, including the regressing of the property and installation of stormwater management. There's 0.94 plus or minus acre properties located on the west side of Five Mile River Road, approximately 115 feet south of its intersection with Davis Lane and is shown on assessment map number 67 as Lot 23 in the R1 and R1 half residential zones. Gentlemen, what do we have?
This project's been designed in conformance with Section 810 and 820 as well as 850 of the Darien zoning regulations relative to Coastal Site Plan Review, Flood Damage Prevention and Land Filling and Regrading. This application was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission a number of months ago. At that time, we realized that ZBA variances would be required for a number of items including minimum lot width and renovation of the barn structure within the side yard setback. The applicant just recently concluded their appearance before the ZBA, variances were granted for minimum lot width and renovation of the barn within the setback. The application was referred out to Joe Canis of Ty &amp; Bond, he originally submitted comments for the record dated April 13th and those comments were responded to by the applicant on May 25th. The Environmental Protection Commission and Rick Talamelli of our office also submitted comments for the record dated April 24th. It was also referred out to the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, they submitted comments for the record dated March 30th indicating that there was no intermunicipal impact as a result of the proposal and was also referred out to Connecticut DEEP. Comments were received from that agency on April 22nd and April 25th. DEEP's overall comments were that there, they saw no coastal impacts that necessarily needed to be addressed. And lastly, the application was referred out to the city of Norwalk and no comments were received from Norwalk. A number of public comments were submitted for the record in connection with this application, three letters in support of the application as well as one letter with a number of concerns and that was from the property owner of 116 Five Mile River Road, the property directly abutting to the south. The property is within the AE13 flood zone, there's a small portion of the property within the VE velocity zone on the eastern portion of the property. A portion of the front retaining wall is located within the VE zone and as a result, the applicant has also submitted a letter from Race Coastal Engineering dated June 22nd relative to coastal impacts of that wall and the development in general. Tonight, here we have Amy Zabatakas and the engineer for the project, Craig Flaherty, to present the application and answer any questions that the commission may have.
I saw the three letters in support, I didn't see the other letter.
That was emailed to you today.
Oh, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Zabatakas, welcome.
Hi, welcome.
Please say your name and affiliation for the record.
Thank you, my name is Amy Zabatakas, I'm an attorney with Rucci Law Group and I'm here on behalf of Mark and Stasha Cohen who, as trustees, own the property at 14 Five Mile River Road, which is a subject property. So as was mentioned by staff, this is a, just under an acre parcel, which is predominantly in the R1 half zone. The lot narrows as you get closer to Five Mile River Road, it's much wider towards the rear, but in the rear of the lot, there's a large pond and associated wetlands. As was stated already, we did go before the Zone of Work of Appeals last week. The existing house on the lot is in almost exactly the same spot as our proposed house, so we, we did have to request a lot width variance that was granted by the zoning board of appeals. So the question of where the house is on the lot is no longer in question since the house otherwise complies with all of the setbacks. I, I would just say slight distinction on the barn, which is on the northerly property line, it was determined by the ZBA that we did not need a variance for that structure, there's just repair being done to that structure and no change in use and no increase in size of that structure.
So that's, that's a legal non-conforming use because it's supposed to be at least five feet from the property line, right?
Correct, it was, it was determined to be legally non-conforming and no variance was required for the work proposed for that structure.
Then, then does it also follow that in the ZBA approval that I saw, there's all these limitations on what could not be done to that barn, so does that, do those limitations still hold?
The, the way that the, they, because there was no variance needed for the barn, there weren't any, there wasn't any variance granted or conditions to the variance for the barn. However, the ZBA did put conditions on the granting of the variance for the lot width that did have to do with the barn structure.
Okay, so all of those limitations that I did read are still in effect?
I, I don't know that that resolution's been signed yet, I don't know that that was final, but yes, that, it's a storage...
That runs with the broader ZBA approval.
Correct, yes, it's a storage structure, not livable space, et cetera.
Got it.
So today, what we're here for you, before you is Coastal Site Plan Review under 810, Flood Damage Prevention Review under 820 and Land Filling and Regrading under 850. So as I said, there is an existing house on this structure, it's approximately 3,600 square feet and is below the flood elevation. We'll be replacing it with a new, approximately 4,000 square foot home, which will be fully compliant with the flood elevation. As was stated, the property's in the, predominantly in the AE elevation 13 zone, so the full house is being raised, so at the bottom of the first floor will be at elevation 14 and the first floor, top of the first floor at elevation 15. We've reviewed all the flood venting designs with the, with Rick Talamelli, received feedback from him in April as was mentioned, we've addressed all of the matters that he's raised. In addition, as was stated, the plans were reviewed by Joe Canis, he agreed with the, he raised some issues, we addressed those and I think there is a second letter from him in the file reporting that all of his concerns have been satisfied. So in order to raise the elevation of the building without creating sort of towering retaining walls, we have done some tiering of the grading, particularly in the front yard. There is a, this was submitted more recently, but we did, there's a sort of grading cross section, so you can see how the front yard sort of tiers up to meet the front of the house. As was discussed, the very front of the property is in the VE flood zone, there's a wall proposed for the very front, right along the, the street line there, that's been reviewed by Race and no, they're not showing any impacts of the floodwaters because of that wall.
So just for record, you're across, you're not on the water side, you're on the cross street from the water.
Correct, yes, that, in that part of Five Mile River, there aren't any houses on the other side of the, of the street.
Yep, it's just like a...
And, and the terracing that you're proposing on the front does adhere to the front setbacks, but on the sides it adheres to the accessory setbacks, or are they fully within the building setbacks?
The, the setbacks apply to the building.
Yeah.
This is, this is the grading that I'm talking about.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, so this is, we're just showing how, rather than going, I'm just trying to demonstrate, rather than just going straight up, because part of the problem here is that this is along that section of Five Mile River Road, none of the houses are flood compliant, so this is gonna be one of the first that's brought up to flood compliance. So my client and his architect worked very hard to try to be sensitive to the area and not have this 30-foot structure up 15 feet in the air. So we're trying to do what we can with the grading and then worked carefully with the engineers, and I'll have Craig speak to this, to make sure there's no negative impacts on any of the neighbors, but we're softening it, we're softening both the way the grading comes up to the structure and then when you look at the structure itself, the way that the structure sits on the site. So for example, the second floor of the structure is pulled way back from the property lines, from the southern property line. Our house, our neighbor to the south is their house, the full straight 30-foot wall of it is three feet away from the property line and in fact their HVAC condenser is between the house and the property line, so within a couple feet. So we're trying to be a little more sensitive to that side by not building a house that's, you know, 15 feet the whole way up and down. So and then in, so this is sort of the front yard, the rear of the property, there is, There's a terrace area with two small accessory structures and a plunge pool, that area also is, is up above the flood elevation as is required. There is no sort of sport court lighting or anything planned for that area, plunge pool is actually, it's about the size of a parking space, so this is not a huge active area. We'll just have sort of normal suburban lighting out there. One question that had been raised in front of the ZBA was that we didn't have a separate sheet in our original plans showing the height of these accessory structures, so this was added and hopefully you've got a, got a copy of it, but, and it's a little low, I apologize, but it's in your packages showing that all of these structures are below the building height requirements. And, and that's not something we're asking for a variance for as well. Alright, so I think at this point, let me, since this is mostly about the ground, let me have Craig speak to you and I think he's gonna be high tech and use it for dinner.
Turn on the... Across my page.
Great, fine, high tech?
Yeah.
The bar, the living space, no lights, no storage, no access to the...
Okay, I mean, that's why I'm doing it, it'd be great for eighty years. I don't wanna talk about that in there.
We didn't get that barn.
The way it's written now, it's a setback for the... I have something I don't agree with, Craig.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Craig Flaherty, I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut, I'm a senior engineer in principle with Redness and Mead, a land use consulting company with offices in Stanford. Thank you, sir. On this project, we provided the land surveys, the zoning location survey, the site design, grading and drainage plans, and erosion control plan, the drainage calculations and the coastal area management assessment and all those were prepared to be compliant with, as Fred mentioned, Sections 810, 820, 850, 880 of your zoning regulations. Just to maybe finish up on a point that Amy was making before I get into the site design... Just to maybe finish up on a point that Amy was making before I get into the site design. What you see here is the existing aerial with the proposed footprint overlaid on the existing aerial. And so the red is the first floor footprint of the house, which complies with all setbacks. But in blue, we've also drawn the second floor footprint of the house, showing how much we've stepped the mass of the building away from the property boundary. You can see the neighbors at 116 Five Mile River Road, the Gadsens, their house is three feet from the property boundary. Their HVAC equipment is right in here. This is 112 Five Mile River. Indicated here is an application that you approved last year for a swimming pool effectively at the same elevation as the plunge pool proposed on this application. I thought that was just relevant to some of the things that Amy had talked about. And this shows you that front elevation view of the house, showing again how the proposed house was thoughtfully designed to really push the massing of the house away from what would otherwise have been a compliant setback, right? To be sensitive to this for both parties, right? Because this house is so close to the property boundary, the Coens felt it was better for them also to keep the massing off the property boundary and to create some space there that didn't otherwise exist. So I think our record is incredibly detailed. I think it's been thoroughly reviewed, but there are some things that were brought up relative to potential impacts that our grading or filling might have on the property to the south, which I think I just want to talk to in detail. So the first plan I'm going to call up is the property and topographic survey. What I'm going to show you on the property and topographic survey is that the actual facts on the ground are that both 116 Five Mile River to the south and 112.
This is what's existing.
This is existing grade, existing house. And I'm going to focus on these existing spot elevations in a second. So the side yards of these two properties actually pitch towards the Coens property. The Coens property is lower than their neighbors. Now I can just very easily show you, but I can look at the spot elevations. 8.3 is higher than 7.8. 8.2 is higher than 7.8. 8.4 is higher than 8.5. 8.6 is higher than 8.5. 8.2 is higher than 7.6. 7.7 is higher than 8.6. Clearly, the side yard of the southerly property sheds towards the Coens. And you can see similar elevations north. The spot elevations on the neighbors' property are above the spot elevations on the Coens property. So what do we do in this case? We want to make sure we don't obstruct the flow of the water that is currently happening. So we're not going to propose a wall on the property line that would obstruct that flow of water. We're not going to propose to grade up to the property line and obstruct that flow of water. We're going to let that water continue to come onto the Coens property and direct it as it does today, either out to Five Mile River Road or back to the pond in the rear. So I'll show you that grading plan. Same orientation now with the proposed grades indicated. So we can do this with squid the era, as you see on some plans, but as you follow the contour lines, you see that they create these U shapes. Those U shapes indicate that there is a swale, right? Shallow surface feature to convey surface waters and drainage. That will take any water that might be coming this way from south to north or any of the landscaped side yard that might be coming from north to south and convey it as it does out to the road and to the back. So I can say here, sit here as a professional engineer specializes in hydraulics and hydrology and grading and say that there will be no drainage impact by this construction on the adjacent properties. And I'll go a little further than that. So also on this plan is the proposed stormwater management design.
What plan are you on now, Craig?
This one is SE2.
Page SE2.
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 So this shows the layout of the stormwater management system, how the water is collected, conveyed, treated, and discharged. So the first thing to pay attention to is this black and white dash line around the perimeter of the home. That black and white dash line will pick up every single gutter and roof we have from the entire main house. And all of that water will be conveyed to this infiltration system shown below the lawn in the front yard. So the entire house is collected, much of the driveway is collected and taken to this infiltration system in the front yard. There, we get our water quality volume treatment to make sure we're having a positive net impact on the quality of water heading toward Five Mile River, because there is no stormwater management system today, right? This is turning back the clock on water quality and actually ending up with a result that is better than what is out there today. Should this system need to overflow, there is a pipe indicated to overflow to the catch basin of the street. We've reviewed that with Department of Public Works. They are comfortable with the connection. So the entire house is collected, taken to the street. The back patio, we have one, two, three, four area drains sited in the back patio. That will collect all the water from the surface. Everything is pitched in towards those drains, not out to the neighbor. It's pitched in towards those drains, will be collected and conveyed to an infiltration system in the backyard. Again, we get our water quality volume, we improve the quality of stormwater runoff. And should that overflow, it would overflow through this grate here and flow to the back, to the pond in the back. None of this is falling towards the neighbors. We've taken great care to make sure that none of the fill that we are proposing creates an adverse impact, whether that be drainage, sediment erosion controls, the slope of the land, the ability to stabilize that land with vegetation. There's hedgerows and vegetation along the property line that are proposed to remain the entire way. We can't leave that there and fill over it. We're not filling over it. We're leaving it there. We're leaving it as a screen and we're trying not to, we're not changing grades where it is. So anyway, I wanted to focus on that item since it was brought up by the neighbor and their representative. We are unequivocally not having an impact, even given how close that neighboring house is to the property boundary, which you see on this exhibit right in this location. Compare that setback with our setback. Honestly, I think that's as far as I really needed to go on the specifics. This was, this is another.
Do you have one, while you're there, do you have one that shows, well, it's under construction with where the stockpiles are?
Oh, sure. So we submitted for the record.
Flood during construction?
We submitted for the record sediment erosion control plan. So the sediment erosion control plan is SE3.
SE3, yep.
Right? SE3 shows which trees will be removed, which trees will be protected. It shows the silt fence along the rear and along the front, because that's where the water goes. And it shows stockpiling during construction, a tracking pad to keep the street clean. So that is required in section 870, 890, 70, Seir Sediment Erosion Controls.
So what gets built first? The foundation of the house?
Yes.
And the front patio gets done last?
Yeah, all the walls and grading would follow the foundation.
When do the chambers in the front yard go in? Is that the beginning? Is that towards the end?
Well, my recommendation is that is towards the end, so they're not compacted during construction. So better for the long life.
So the first thing you do is the foundation of the house, and that's why there's stockpiles with the front patio?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Okay. And at that point in time, that, the center portion is still lower grade than everything else?
Yes, exactly.
The spot elevations aren't changing?
Exactly. Where we, while the foundation is being built, we're still the lowest land around before we bring in the fill after the foundation is up.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. This is, this is kind of a terrace. This is lawn. And then that's the front lawn, as shown in that section. You know, again, worth, I mentioned the pool next door. This was an application approved by this commission. This is the Coens property right here. There's Five Mile River. This pool is up at elevation 13.75, which is three inches lower than the pool that we're proposing, approved at that height, right at the setback line, which again, you can juxtapose with the location of the pool that we're proposing. And I should, we keep using this term pool. It's eight by 16, which is smaller than a parking space. It's a plunge pool. Again, this is not a new McMansion. This is a thoughtfully scaled house for the site that it is on. And that goes to the accessory structures that you see as well, with the cabana here and the mechanical equipment and shower there in a 10 or 11-foot-high building that could otherwise be much taller. And it's always nice to show the pretty picture. So there was the landscape rendering of what it looks like at the end of the day.
So the yellow in the front, in the front yard, that's, that's a rock wall, and then there's grass between that and the next terrace.
Yes. So several of the properties on Five Mile River Road have a little knee wall at the front. So we're emulating that because we think it looks nice, but it's also practical, you know?
I was actually mentioning the yellow walls.
Oh, this is a planter. This is effectively green. It's yellow to indicate that it's going to be rougher plantings than lawn.
Oh, okay. So that's not a structure.
Yeah, it's part of the stepping. It's done for aesthetics and both the wave attenuation that Race looked at, you know, multiple smaller steps were able to mitigate the impact. So there was none versus a kind of a large face wall facing towards the flood. So yeah, this is the knee wall. This slopes up from seven to eight. Then you have an 18-inch planter with some, you know, flowers and shrubs in it. And then you have, this is all just a grass terraced lawn.
With stairs in the middle, right?
With these stairs in the middle, exactly. And then you take the final few steps up to the front terrace and into the front door. And again, I think it's, it's a little harsher on this picture, but it shows how we have to transition the grade to basically set this house and make it look like it had always been there, right? Versus something that had to get jacked up because of the new flood rates.
Yep.
That's where we are, right? This is, this is sea level rise. This is, you know, the new flood regs. This is how houses in flood zones will have to be developed. You've seen it a number of times already. You know, they have to be lifted. And you have to figure out the design choices you need to make to have that make sense.
In that front knee wall in the front, is there a way I can, is there a break in the wall so I can walk from the street to my front door of my house without jumping over the wall?
No. No, you go up the driveway. Not a bad idea. Put a couple of steps there.
So if the soccer ball rolls off the front porch, it's going to hit the knee wall and stay in my front yard and not hit the street?
Uh, oh, the soccer ball.
I was worried about the soccer ball.
You play soccer in the front yard?
In this neighborhood, you do. You're not playing in the backyard of the pond with a plunge pool.
Yeah. Well, I mean, whatever. The walls are there. There's no stairs on the street side.
Yeah, you can just link that up.
Good.
So Craig mentioned a number of the things already that I was, was going to mention regarding the massing of the house. So I'm not going to restate all of that. Like I said, the neighbor, you can, you can see their house clearly is, it's three feet from the property line. So we are trying to do what we can on that side. In addition, as Craig mentioned, there is a line of tall arborite along the property line now. Those are being retained. There's also additional plantings proposed along the property line on my client's property to further screen these two properties from one another. The mechanicals are all within this small building. By having them in a building rather than out and exposed, that will further muffle any noise to be heard, you know, both obviously by the people on my client's property, but as well as any neighbors. There's the building plus a planting bed and then the row of arborite.
So we'd say that you have, the backup generator is not inside the building. Shower mechanicals and the, that's the pool equipment that's inside there?
Right.
The pool equipment's got to be small, right?
Yeah, well, it's a small.
Small pool.
But it still has to be filtered, just like any other pool.
Is, are we calling that your landscaping plan?
Yes.
Is that in our packet as a landscaping plan? Is that in, most of the time, those do color.
This is the landscape plan that is on the record. They just took a colored pencil with this one.
It's the one submitted, we received in March.
It was, the colored one was actually, yeah, so there was one in March. That's a formal landscaping plan. And then this colored one was submitted to you today since we knew we'd be using it at the time of the hearing. So it is part of the record.
We already have a landscaping plan?
Yes. But this is a, this is the pretty one.
Is that the final one, not a conceptual? Sometimes you put in conceptual landscaping plans.
This is, as far as what's shown on here, this is all proposed to be planted. We haven't, you know, down to the minutia of flowers, et cetera, as, you know, as Craig pointed out. There will be some planting here, you know, but there's, it is, let's see if I can get that.
You don't have it down to the final. Oh, you do?
We do.
Okay. So it has in there like 16 hydrangeas and 22 boxwoods and, okay. All right, that's part of the application, then.
And that's, yeah, that's part of the record. One thing that has been, has been raised by the neighbors of the south is that we're regrading within 15 feet of the property line. And that's correct. And that is allowed under the regulations, subject to your review and approval, that there's no negative impacts on the neighbors. And I think one of the things that Craig says bears repeating. The lots to the north and south of this lot actually drain onto this lot. So what we're proposing will actually improve the whole area because we now have a designed drainage plan and a designed way. Some of this is a natural swale existing now, but to continue to move that water off these properties, either into Five Mile River or into the pond in the rear.
Today, there's no existing drainage plan or drainage system on the property at all?
Not, no, not a stormwater management system with the roof and all the rest of it.
No cul-de-sac, no nothing? Just sheeted those and goes?
No, because this is, this is a non-conforming house currently, like I said. Existing house is below the flood elevation. They had to do some amount of drainage. They, they did get a variance for an addition on, so there was some amount of drainage done with that, but not for the, not for the house as a whole.
Are you putting gutters on the barn?
No.
No, we are not.
Okay. That's a barn.
I've heard the ZBA, there's stipulations. I don't think you can change anything on the outside.
Can they paint the barn?
Yes, we're going to be repairing the barn.
Yes, but no increasing of mass. That's how I interpret it.
So I, you know, I'll let, I know Attorney Maslin is here on behalf of the neighbors, so I'll let him speak now. But I do just want to say that based on my review of the materials that have been submitted by the neighbors, I don't see any regulation that our application is not in compliance with. We do have an engineered plan from a certified professional engineer. It's been reviewed by Joe Canis on behalf of the town as a peer review engineer. So there, and I'm not aware of any engineer who has spoken, made any negative comments about the project. So, but I'll let him have his say.
Well, let's get Craig back up for a second. Does anybody have questions for Craig at this point? You're good. Where is Joe Canis's letter? Just want to go over that with Craig before we go.
I have one dated June 20, 23.
Yeah, it's at my comments meeting. Okay, go ahead. So is there anything you have to do on this?
At this point, the big gold at the top is all comments addressed. No additional information is requested.
Oh, that's yours. You have more than's more recent than mine. I'm looking at April 13.
You want June 20. Would you like June 20?
Yeah, can we get June 20 for me? So in terms of a buried propane tank, is there? Thanks, Craig. Let's just go over comments addressed. Let's just go over comments addressed. You might just go over the last part.
Sure, I'll go over the comments that you had. We'll do. So first comment was related to a buried propane tank and making sure that its construction was going to be compliant with the flood zone requirements. So we're going to provide anchoring and a water-tight cover, and that was acceptable to Joe. The next comment had to do with the venting of the crawl space to allow the flow and ebb of floodwaters, and making sure those vents were no more than a foot above the floor. So we confirmed that with the architectural foundation plan and our site plan.
What's the height of the crawl space?
Varies between elevation nine and ten, and that varies, so the lowest vents are on the southeast wing of the building.
Great.
So those would be at elevation nine, but as you kind of go back up towards the driveway, the floor is at elevation ten. The idea is simply so that if flood, floodwaters ever enter the crawl space, that they would just flow out by gravity.
But the, is, am I doing the math right, the crawl space is six feet tall?
Well, you have to take, well, the, uh, let's see.
Says crawl space elevation's nine, and then first floor elevation fifteen.
Yeah, so you've got the first floor elevation fifteen, you then have twelve to fifteen inches of framing, right? So your bottom of rafters is effectively like thirteen, seven, five, so the highest side of the crawl space is ten, so that's three point seven five feet.
Okay. Three point seven five?
Yeah, which...
The highest point is three point seven five feet?
The, well, the lowest headroom is three, seven, five, the highest floor elevation.
Okay.
In the crawl space, yeah.
But if, if, the other end, it's six feet high, six feet minus eighteen inches?
It's less than five feet high.
Okay. Okay.
Next comment was related to some grading at the front, which was a detail that was addressed. He had said initially, there was, I think, a low point created in one of these terraces, and so we've eliminated that, so there's no need for a drain. D is just a note for the plans, if we have any walls that are higher than three feet, they require their own structural certification and building department review. We went over with Joe the cool fence requirements for safety around plunge pool, and were able to show how we complied relative to the height of the retaining walls, and we added a few guardrails where necessary.
That's building department, that too.
Yeah, exactly. And then the last one had to do with the wall in the front, and this was before we had the letter from the coastal engineer that said it wasn't going to be a problem, so we submitted that to Joe, and he accepted it.
Consider re-cling the wall so it does not approach an VE zone, and the coastal engineer signed off on it.
Correct.
Are we going to hear from Race tonight?
They are not here.
They're not here, so we just have to invite him for the record.
Great.
Okay. Anything else for Craig? We're good? We're good? Okay. We're good? You're good?
I'm good for now.
There you go. Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application? Mr. Maslin's nodding his head?
It's not the general public, I don't know, this is a higher rating than that.
The last guy owned the death hospital next door, he was general public.
What's that?
The guy from the death hospital next door, he was general public. Mr. Maslin, welcome. Just say your name and affiliation for record, as you usually do.
I need just a second to get, get the electronics moving in the right direction.
We're going to try to move this, we're trying to move on from this application against a general meeting, at what time?
Nine thirty? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm getting ready.
That was in that time. We got a lot over to do.
We'll have copies for a minute.
Here we are. All right. Okay.
Bob, did, did you bring copies of this?
Yes, I did.
You already kicked that, you're parallel.
Thanks, Bob. I'm sure I didn't need, I gave one to Amy, so she has it.
Great, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Maslin, I'm an attorney here in Darien, as you probably know already. And yes, I kind of am a member of the general public. With me is Rita Gadston, sitting out in the middle of the room back there, third row, and I represent her and her husband, Robert, who because of some issues he's dealing with, he can't attend public meetings like this.
Where do they live?
Sixteen.
I'll show you in a slide. They live at one sixteen Five Mile River Road.
Okay.
Which is this property right here. I put up, this is the 2019 aerial, I use that one because it tends to be clearer than the others on the, the butter's tool of the GIS map. The application property is pointed to with the yellow arrow, and the Gadstons is the narrower lot to the south. This is a street view from, and Mr. Gadston took these syndicated Five Mile River Road looking southerly. The subject property is in the foreground with the "for sale" sign. That silt fence belongs to the property to the north, probably related to that pool project.
Yep.
This is from the other direction looking up, and Gadston property is the White House here, and next to that, behind that is the subject, one fourteen. Now, this is a, an aerial where I've drawn a yellow line that runs along the facades of the houses. The one fourteen is in the middle here, and you'll notice a bend in the property line, and that's why they, there's a bend in the, in the yellow alignment line. You can tell that the facades are generally consistent here, and it's significant because in this applic, this slide, you'll see Gadston's house here, one twelve is up here, and the yellow is all added filling and terracing. And the front of the house is actually fourteen feet farther, farther forward than the existing house. That we raised at ZBA, they granted the variance to move farther into the narrower part of the lot, so that's where we stand right now. The Gadstons have a few concerns, and I'll, I'll run through these very quickly, there are really three of them. One is the amount of the grading, particularly in the rear patio terrace. That is five and a half feet above grade, it's close to the property line, it didn't exist before, and if you take the existing grade, when we're done, it's going to be six and a half feet up higher than the existing grade, without counting the fences that might be required for the pool. Portions of the property, or proposed terraces, rather, are about ten feet from the southerly property boundary. The regulation says the commission has to find that the proposed grading will have no impact. This will have a tremendous visual impact at a minimum, and there are some questions about the drainage and grading that I'll get into in a minute, but you don't automatically get to within fifteen feet just by saying there's no drainage problem. The visual impact is as important. And Section eight fifty-four B, the way I've always applied it is the ability to go within fifteen feet of a boundary for grading is for minor cuts and minor fills for driveways, little knee walls, things like that, but not a five and a half foot retaining wall. I remember a situation years ago where the commission, all, all different people, over on Cove's End Road, the owner tried to flatten out a pitch, and it was within a few feet of the property boundary, and even though the neighbor most affected agreed with it, the commission denied it because of its proximity to the, to the property boundary. So that, that regulation's been enforced over the years, and again, it's including visual impacts. The pool patio and the shower and equipment structure will also result in a significant visual impact, and that's an impact as compared with what's there now, which is the existing grade with nothing on it. I know Craig talked about the, the regrading along the southern boundary. The real problem that we have is it's not really clearly laid out as either a berm or a swale. Craig says it's a swale. When you really examine it, when you're alongside the house, there are no grade lines. There's one that shows a nine-foot grade along the bottom of a set of steps, which is much higher than the grade on the adjoining property with nothing in between, no grade lines in between to show anything that's going to be a surface, provide direction for surface runoff. So that's our second major issue, and the third, and I'll get into diagrams in just a second here. The entire front yard is being raised by one point six feet plus or minus, and there'll be a new knee wall. There's no outlet for the knee wall. Whatever doesn't go into the catch basin next to the cul-de-sacs is coming downhill along the knee wall, and it's going to dump out at seven or eight feet directly in the, in the direction of the Gadstons' property, and probably pond there, and I'll show you there's a root that the water can take at that elevation. We think it's a very simple fix, but it is a concern. And finally, none of the filling for the pool patio is required for compliance with flood regulations. The equipment can be put in structures at a lower grade on platforms that will comply with the regulations, the flood regulations, and you'll still have an enclosure for it. You can still have a lower patio with steps going up to the house and steps to the cabana and shower if you want, but relocate them so they're in the same place, so you're dealing with one set of steps for the accessory building, and one set of steps for the back of the house, and you still have a nice patio with the plunge pool. Again, that's a possibility. The pool does not have to be any particular elevation under the flood regulations. So let me just try to blow this up. I, I've made some notations, and this took me a while because I had this all set, and then I had to redo it because we had a new set of plans. But starting over on the left, filling and retaining wall, six and a half feet above the existing grade, if you look carefully at the existing grades and compare it with the wall specs, the bottom of the wall is actually about a foot above the existing grade, and then you go to the top of the wall, and you have a total of five, six and a half, five and a half feet, because when it's finished, the grade's finished along the retaining wall, you're a foot higher. So this is high, and it doesn't comply with the fifteen-foot setback. That's clear on another, on another plan, and it's certainly clear on the colored-up, rendered landscape plan. I mentioned the grade along the foundation, this is what I'm talking about. You have grade lines here, the flow is going to be perpendicular to the grade lines, and this looks like a lower elevation here, so you're, you're basically coming down in the direction of the Gadston property. Here's the nine feet. That's a new elevation, ten feet for the, it says lowest step. It's not clear whether that's the ground elevation or the actual step itself. Nine feet is substantially higher than the elevation on the other side of the property boundary. So the simple result there is, down it goes.
Nine versus eight-six?
Something like that.
That's, that's substantial? Nine versus eight-six?
But it's still a downward slope with, no, it's a downward slope with no mechanism in there.
I'm just focused on the word "substantial."
It's just a, it's just a, well, if you get a torrential rain, that's what's going to happen, it's going to come down and flow onto the Gadston property, where now it goes the other way. And that's, that's not fair to the Gadstons. Again, the simple fix is put a more well-defined swale in so we can be sure and the staff can have a plan that they can refer to when, looking at the site during, during and after the construction is complete. This front terrace has a retaining wall that's nine feet above the existing grade.
Can I stop you right there? The, the quote "more defined swale" that you're, you're saying might be a proposed solution, is that not in the same area where you have well-established mature arborvitae?
Right, there's a hedgerow there.
This room, put it in.
Okay, just want to, just want to make sure that that is the area you're proposing that to happen, and that where the arborvitae's are?
All along here, in a way that meshes with, you know, the arborvitae or whatever the plantings are going to be.
Now, there's a spot elevation right there at eight-point-one. So it goes not, it goes nine to eight-point-one, up to eight-point-six. So it goes down, it goes down below.
But it's, again, it's going perpendicular, so it's going in a direction.
But isn't that the swale we're talking about?
It's a simple, it's a simple fix.
Isn't that the swale we're talking about?
It exists naturally.
It exists naturally today.
I'm sorry, what, what do you?
You point to the steps, right? Bottom of the stairs is nine. The next, the next point on that is eight-point-one, that's at the front, it's the front spot elevation in front of the hedgerow. And then it goes eight-six, so by my math, it goes from nine down to eight-one.
But the grades along the boundary are, are down as well.
So it goes, it goes down.
Yes, they are. You've got ten here, nine, and eight-point-four, I mean, it's, we're just saying, show it.
You just don't see the eight-one.
You're talking about this? Here, here, or this one?
That one.
Right, but water's got to travel. The, the problem is it's not shown in that level of scale or detail, and I'm just suggesting, show it so the staff can say, oh, yes, there's a swale there.
Yeah, I, I see it.
That's really, it's not a hard fix.
Okay.
Okay. This retaining wall has nine feet, shows it nine feet above the existing grade in that fifteen-foot setback. That also is about ten feet from the property boundary. The cross-section, I mentioned the fifteen-foot setback here, and then the far upper right, it shows the entire front yard being graded, this we just figured out when we got the profile, that really wasn't clear because there are no contours in the front yard to show the pitch down to that catch basin. So what's going to happen, or it's likely to happen, is you have contour here, and I believe this is, this is eight, this is seven, but this matches up here. So through here is seven, and that's where the water is, Greg, you can see it's almost like a little road where the grade is down. Again, a simple, simple fix. Show the grades.
I'm looking at six-six, six-one, five-five.
Where?
Five, I'm going from west to east.
Okay. The eight contour is here, it exists as an eight contour on the Gadston property, and the seven contour here ties in with the seven contour here. So eight, seven, this is lower, and the... It raises a possibility that there's higher grade in the entire front yard, that doesn't make it to the catch basin, and when you look at the, the profile, and I believe that's this one, yeah, this, this shows a straight pitch downward, albeit slight, but there's no, there's no pitching toward the catch basin that's supposed to be in the middle, which is right about in here.
Oh, can I ask you?
Show it, show it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When did you provide this to the...
We did this, well, we just, the PowerPoint today. But we just got some of the information that was provided today.
Craig, have you ever checked to review any of this?
Yeah, I've got it recorded. You've got it recorded.
Do you want to answer now or wait until?
No.
We're getting close to 9:30 and...
We received this PowerPoint 45 minutes before the start of the meeting. I have reviewed it. I've been listening to Mr. Maslin. I'm not worried yet.
Okay. Are you, are you going to be prepared to respond to this?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you can see here, this profile shows the distance that they actually moved the house forward, which creates a little bit of an increase in the slope. Somebody mentioned a soccer ball. It looks like there is a half a foot here. I don't think that's going to stop us bouncing soccer ball necessarily. We don't have a profile for the backyard where the new patio is going to be located. It's just the front from the house forward. I don't know why they didn't include it, but they didn't. Mr. Gadsden prepared this diagram from the information that was in the file, and it basically is a comparison between the Gadsden house, the proposed patio, the proposed equipment room, and the rest of the house.
This is prepared...
The house...
This is, I just want to go over it. This was prepared by whom?
Mr. Gadsden.
Okay.
Gadsden.
Okay.
Is this to some sort of scale?
Yeah, he did it, he drew it to scale, the best he could.
There's no scale on it? Where's the scale?
Oh, the scale on it? I don't...
Yeah, no scale.
I don't have a, you mean a bar with one-inch...
One-eighth goes two feet.
No, this is all scaled in the sense that it's accurate as a relative comparison.
It must be, it's a good thing. You have a nice looking house.
And this person is about five and a half, six feet, as are all the others. And the next one is a little bit of a close-up here. So if you're standing alongside the Gadsden house, you're looking straight at a wall. And that's the objection. It's too close and it's too high. And it can be modified so it reduces the impact. Mr. Gadsden also did this, and this is more schematic, but it is relatively accurate in terms of comparison and scale. This is the retaining wall that goes past the, that's the garage, that's the garage apartment. This is that utility building garage, and it extends over here. Then you have this garden, they elevate it in the middle, and then you have the terracing in the back. And these are all compared with the existing grade, just to show the impact. So, requests and suggestions. They're not onerous. They don't involve redesigning the house or relocating it necessarily unless they're able to push it back a little bit. But reduce the heightened area of the pool terrace. Mr. Gadsden, in his email that he submitted earlier, said that he received a plan less than two weeks before the application was filed. And that plan showed the terrace going straight back, almost as an extension of the south wall of the house and back. And that would have been perfectly fine. It's the farthest point, 28 feet, and the nearest point, 20 feet, from the property boundary. That was the original plan that he was shown. Less than two weeks later, this is filed, which became a surprise.
Do you know when that date was? Is that like April? Was that what you were talking about? Was he talking about, you know?
In March. March, I believe it was around March 5th.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like yesterday.
Oh, no, 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 no.
March.
No, and to be fair, they've been exchanging emails, but, you know, it's kind of hard when you're, you know, when you're given one plan and then another plan, and you have to go back and forth by email. Okay, so reduce the height and area of the pool terrace and move it farther away from the southerly boundary. That mitigates the negative visual impacts on the Gadsden property and eliminates the non-conformity with the 15-foot excavation and filling setback. Possibly combine the cabana and equipment shower building into one and locate it near the garage and barn where it doesn't impact anybody. And you can put raised platforms through the equipment on the inside. You're not going to see them from the outside. It'll look fine. Attractive steps going up as needed. Modify the grading along the southern boundary. As I mentioned, just show the swale. Just show it. So the staff can go out and look and say, okay, there's something on the plan here. Where is it on the ground? And finally, just confirm the calculation of average existing and finished grade around the foundations of these buildings. It's not really clear. I didn't see the calculations, but you usually do have conditions about things like staff review and as-built and as-built height to make sure it's all in compliance. I mean, that's a standard, standard comment. So really, it's the rear patio, lower it, move it farther away. And move that corner of the front back to at least 15 feet so it complies with the 15 feet. I have to say one final thing. I don't know how a five- and six-foot retaining wall over the existing grade can have no impact on a nearby neighboring property. Of course, it has an impact. And just one other comment. It was said that the Gadsden house is three feet away. It's more like four or five. Not terribly significant, but Rita asked me to clarify that. So if you have any questions, I'm here. And Rita's here if you have questions of her.
Thank you. Ms. Detex, do you mind putting up the landscaping plan again?
I'll put up the hard copy while I'm just...
I'm just going to leave this.
Yeah, you can take the material too, that'll be great.
So the existing...
Do you want me to bring this up to you?
I guess I'm good.
We're quick enough, yeah.
While they're fluffing around.
Can you spell that?
Okay, sorry, I have to repeat this again. Okay.
This hedgerow's already there, so you can't see that. Are you going to ask that? I guess that's, that's a Navy question.
What's that?
What's that?
Cover.
They call it the glass application of the pergola. I guess, Craig, the first question is the, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not sure who drew the landscaping plan.
Mm-hmm.
But that existing hedgerow is there today, right?
Correct.
And so, is it going to get more dense, or is it, it's not being touched?
Let's just go to the, so the arborvitae's to remain are here.
Okay.
And then these are proposed.
So can you just count this for me really quick?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And they are JV and IO, which is Eastern Red Cedar is the JV, and American Holly is the IO. So both evergreen.
Can you tell what they are on center? Like 18 inches on center?
I'm going to say they're probably more like three to five feet on center.
Okay.
Yep.
And they grow out, right? So if I'm standing on the southern property, can I see through the new set of hedges that is nine of them?
It's going to be a nice buffer. And they're going to be planted at eight to nine feet tall.
Eight to nine feet tall? Out of the box?
Out of the box.
Wow, okay. And then the front part, at the beginning of your presentation, you talked about the, the swales and the, I want to say berms, but the swales, how all the water is going to go out to the road on one side and to the pond on the other side before you even got into the houses and the, and the...
Yep.
And the drainage. Can you just explain that again?
Yep. So here's that front part.
And can, and on your plan, before you submit, can you further define these swales?
Yeah.
Like in a different color or dotted line?
Yeah, I can use those little squiggly arrows.
Yeah, I like those things.
We can submit a plan with the squiggly arrows. We can accept a condition that says no surface water movement over the southerly property boundary. That's an easy one, too.
Okay.
But I agree with your review of the plan, which is that you've got the eight contour. This means this is staying.
Great.
The reason I don't have a proposed contour there is because the existing one is staying. So we've got nine to 8.1 to eight. We've got 8.6 here to eight, 8.4 to eight. To me, that's the way the water's going. Want squiggly arrows? I can do squiggly arrows.
Please, that'd be great.
And then, I can't, this is not touchscreen. Similarly, this is proposed, bottom of the wall elevation eight, top of the wall elevation seven. It's all grass, first of all, but the direction of flow is from elevation eight to elevation seven. It's not this way.
Great.
Some question, is it going to, is it going to travel along this wall like a curb? Well, if it does, we intentionally did not bring the grade or the wall to the southerly property boundary. We left a gap, and we left existing grade. So if that does happen, water will go out to the street.
Okay. I would say, do you ever put weep holes in walls like that?
Yeah. So that's another, bells and suspenders. We could put a, you know, we could lower this grade to 6.8 and put a weep hole through the wall there right at the catch basin. So it's clear that that's where the water goes.
Do you need more than one, or you need...
I don't think so.
Okay. And that, is that just like a three-inch diameter PVC pipe or something?
Yeah, I mean, you could do it. I would, on a nice job like this, I'd do it out of stone. You know, put a little header stone above it and have a little gap underneath.
Okay. So the water can get through the wall, even though my kid's going to jump over the wall and it's going to hold the soccer ball?
That's right.
Okay. Because it's going to wreck his front yard, too, if he's got a pond in his front yard.
And there's some indication that, you know, Section 850, the word aesthetics is not in here. The word visual impact is not in here. You can't just decide what you think adverse impact means. It's in the context of the regulation. So in the context of the regulation, you've got Section 853 general requirements. It talks about ground stability and soil erosion. It talks about stormwater runoff and protection of watercourses, streams, and ponds. It talks about pollution, siltation, and stream erosion, flying dust erosion by wind, conservation of topsoil, preservation of trees and vegetation. Those are the, that's the context of Section 850. Context of Section 850 is don't put something up that I don't like to look at.
Right. We even had, in this, in this commission with buffers and bushes and trees and...
And I think, well, from our perspective, we've designed it sensitive. And we have nine new evergreens.
Right.
Planted at eight to nine feet in front of that wall immediately.
How tall are you?
If, I am six-four, so that's eight feet. And there would never be a person standing here because you'd be in the middle of an existing hedgerow.
Right.
Can you speak to, or maybe the homeowners can speak to, the change in plans from what was discussed two weeks prior to the change in the plan there?
The answer...
Doesn't matter.
Yes, it's March.
Oh, oh, oh.
You're talking about March to June.
Oh, I thought it was just much closer to, okay, nevermind.
And I can give you a relatively quick answer. We met with staff in connection with what, before, when we applied to the zoning board of appeals. And one of the issues that came up at that time was staff felt that our, there wasn't enough space between the end of the garage and the property line. They wanted to see a full, they wanted to see a full parking space behind, between the outside of the garage, even though we felt the original design did give us enough space to back out and do a three-part turn. So the garage was moved in.
Moved closer.
And that affected the other items on the property. So yes, there was a different terrace design originally, which was the initial design that my clients had wanted. I think most of the other points that I was going to make have been made as far as the screening. I did just also want to make a note that we did, my clients, even before I got involved, did mention to the Gadsdens that the engineers would be happy to sit down with them and go over the plans and make sure that they were comfortable and understood these drainage patterns. And at no point was that offer taken up. So I think, if I can sort of do a concluding remark at this point, I would say that I think that my clients have done quite a bit to try to address both the neighbors' concerns and what might be their concerns. If you'd like to hear from them, you can. They did meet with them out on the street to go over the plans well before anything was filed. You know, I think this is a very sensitive project. I've seen applications come before you that are much more intense in their impact on neighbors, talking about the grading within 15 feet of the property line. I've seen people come forward with retaining walls on the property line that I argued might be a little too close to the property line, if you may recall. So to say that we don't allow regrading within 15 feet of the property line, I don't know when Attorney Maslin was referring to, but that certainly, I've certainly seen it recently. And as I said, one of the things we have to understand is that this is the first house to go up above the flood elevation. It is very important that we start to get our houses above the flood elevation. It's required by FEMA. It's something that staff gets questioned about often by state and federal representatives. So, you know, we're, we try to do it as sensitively as possible.
When we approved the house next door to the northy with the pool, that's, I think, at 13 feet. And we told the guy, if you pull a flood, you pull a flood. You built it at 13 feet, that's your problem.
But it does have a wall that's within, you know, right near my client's property line.
The only other question I wanted to ask is, this pond in the backyard, can you overfill that pond ever?
It's, I mean, it's regulated inland well and water body. So I don't know, you want to take an application to the wetlands agency and say we'd like to fill the pond?
No, you asked me to do that, and I said, no, we declined.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Any questions for, or anybody? Miss Gray, did you miss anything? Are you good?
I'm good if you're good.
Would anybody else like to speak to this application? You want to say something else about, another bite of the apple? Sure. So I think Craig's going to put some squiggly lines on, on your plan for you.
In 2018, a two-lot subdivision came before the commission at 175 Brookside Road.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, you did it.
The commission, I didn't do that one. This was before, this was the previous application, 2018.
Okay.
When the commission decided that, the two-lot subdivision was approved, but a retaining wall for a driveway 30 feet away from the property boundary was denied. The only basis for denying it would have been, it's too much. It's too much of a grade change. And that's about 30 feet from the property line, maybe 35, because it met the set, it met the building setback at 35 feet in the two-acre zone. So to say that this is okay is just not, not consistent with looking at the visual impact of grading, that much grading. And that was about a six- or seven-foot-high retaining wall, not unlike the height of this one. It was for a driveway, which you could say is more necessary than a patio because you need to get to the house or to the garage. And, and the commission denied it. Eventually, the property sold and the current owner went back with a different plan and relocated the driveway, and the commission approved it. But the commission denied the original one that far away from the property boundary. So I mention that because it's sounding like aesthetics don't matter. The regulation doesn't say impacts accept aesthetics or accept visual. It's just impacts. It's not a qualified term. Yes, they have other factors in there to consider, but the commission always has the discretion. And here, the... and here, the regulation does require the commission to make an affirmative finding that there's no impact, and we, with the demonstration, the illustrations and with commentary and Mr. Gadsen's email, we've certainly documented impact, visual if nothing else.
So just. Nine, nine foot apovites, though, that's what you're gonna say?
Well, there are some there now.
No, they're putting nine new ones, they're putting nine new ones.
On top of this retaining wall goes a building, another building, which isn't there today, so this, um, it does have an impact, there's no, in my mind, there's no question about it, and that impact counts under eight fifty, the simple fix is move it back so it meets the fifteen foot setback, back and front, because of the corner of the front, in fact, this, this is the plan that I was referring to, here's, here's how much it extends over that fifteen foot line, and here's that front corner, if you have the stairs here, you square it off right here, and it would be perfectly fine, um, over here, if you tuck this in a little bit and make it straight along here, or you run it parallel to the, or parallel to an extension of the side wall of the house, it works fine, it's, it's a fix, it's an easy fix.
Right.
And that's really.
But Bob, if your client wanted to design this project, they should have bought the house.
This is not the point.
That is the point.
We're not designing anything, this is.
You might have to redesign it now.
Impact.
You're sitting there telling them how to, how to design their, their property.
You said a fix.
No, I'm just saying, this, these are things that could be done.
Sure.
In order to.
They could also build, build them higher, they could also build it closer to your property line.
They can do these things.
Could not build it at all.
To bring it into compliance with the fifteen feet, that's the point, it's compliance with the fifteen feet.
But they're not out of compliance.
There's an impact, I, I don't think there's any question that there's an impact.
You're not gonna be able to see anything through the, the new plantings.
Sure they are.
How?
They're.
You're gonna see the compliant building that they're building?
Their kitchen, their kitchen area is back here.
Okay.
They're gonna see right over the, right over the argovites and see it, that, I mean, that's, they're gonna see it, there's no question, they're gonna see the building on top of it, they're gonna see pool fences if, if, or a fence required by the building department because the wall is above a certain height, so those things are all gonna be visible, and those are impacts, there's no question.
Yeah, I can see it to my neighbor's house too.
Pardon?
I can see it to my neighbor's house too.
I don't know where he lives, so I.
Come on over anytime, you're welcome.
Well, this is a new project with regulations that apply.
You built the new house next to me too.
You know, if, if impacts like this don't count, then what's the purpose of the fifteen foot setback, that, that's really the point.
Understood, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so, thank you, uh, for listening.
Anytime, Mrs. Abatech, you have to, last word always?
Um, I, I don't think there's any reason to belabor the points any further, as was stated, um, we could have built a thirty foot house right on the property line, we didn't, um, I think this is designed to reduce impact, um, the landscaping reduces impact, so, um, I hope that the, if there are any, unless there are any other questions for myself or the engineer, I think we've said what we need to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you're gonna add, and everyone else in the audience got to speak, right? Okay, uh, intention, motion to close, Amy makes the motion, Adam makes the session, hold in favor, Gary's closed, uh, we can close, Jerry, quarter on.
Yeah, don't we have one more, we have one more. We don't have the one seventy.
Yep, we do.
We do.
No. No, general meeting's over.
Yeah.
No, we're trying to close, we're trying to close the public hearings to get the general meeting by ten o'clock, I mean, we still have forty five minutes worth of work to do, but we're just trying to get turbo and get through this stuff. And all of this, that's, I mean, you're quick.
I know.
I know, it's funny, sometimes they want fifteen feet, sometimes they don't. So watch the handsome ball. All right, um, that's the end of the public hearing tonight, now we're gonna go into the general meeting, um, the first item on the general meeting is amendment to flood downstream application number four, three, four, Lucas and Bronny Raymond at one seventy-eight near Water Lane proposed to add a hot tub to a roof deck, the, that's the proposal, it's a, um, the zero point one nine plus acre subject property is located on the east side of near Water Lane, approximately eighty feet south of its intersection with Shipway Road, and is shown on assessor's map number fifty-five as lot two in the Narroton Bay District Residential Zone, R dash NBD, um, this is a general meeting item where the people wanna put a rooftop, a pool on top of the roof.
Good, guys. Go ahead, Flannery.
General, what do we got?
Yeah, so this, um, the commission previously approved, uh, a new house on this lot in October twenty twenty-two, uh, the property owner, Luke Raymond, uh, came back to us last month with some plans to place a hot tub spa on the rooftop deck, um, and we thought it was appropriate to bring this before the commission at a general meeting, um, free to consider this as an amendment to the previously approved plans, uh, so in your packets, we distributed, uh, materials relative to the proposal to add this rooftop deck and spa, uh, Luke provided a letter from his directly abutting five or six neighbors, which was emailed to you today as well, it's a letter dated June twenty-sixth, and is signed by one, two, three, four, five, six of his, uh, directly abutting neighbors. Uh, Luke is here tonight to, uh, answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, this came up, um, from staff today, and I, and we talked about, is it a public hearing, is it a general meeting item, I'd ask you just to make it a general meeting item, um, as long as the neighbors were informed that we didn't just slip in something without them knowing, which is why we have the letter.
Okay.
So they were, they were informed, but not, it's, it's, it doesn't raise to the level of having a whole public hearing, um, anything else you wanna explain to us, sir, it's a general meeting item.
Yeah, cool, first of all, thank you for pronouncing my wife's name correctly, she would be thrilled, it never happened, it never happened.
He hasn't asked anything correctly. It's shocking.
Bravo, she would be thrilled, um, yeah, so, uh, just really briefly, we, um.
Who's did you name for the question?
Oh, sorry, Luke Raymond, the owner, um, uh, after our plan was approved, uh, we worked with our engineer, um, to potentially put the, uh, hot tub on the roof, and so, uh, our engineer, um, uh, created plans to allow two hundred pounds per square foot on our roof deck, uh, to give you a sense of how much that roof can hold, it's, uh, creates to ninety thousand pounds, uh, for the square footage area that we have, so from an engineering perspective, um, the house has not only been engineered, but built to that spec, um, and then, uh, basically what we're looking to do is put a hot tub on our roof, um, we've created a knee wall, forty-two inch knee wall, uh, in the area where the, uh, hot tub would be, uh, for safety, I have a six-year-old and a ten-year-old, so obviously, safety is at the forefront of how we want to make sure that this is done, on top of that forty-two inch knee wall, we are proposing to put, uh, a cable rail fence as well, um, both of those plans have, or both of those ideas have been proposed and approved by my neighbors, as you'll see on the letter, uh, we've already built the knee wall, so they, as I put in here, as built, so they've already seen what we have built currently and approved that, and also within the letter, it's, it states the, uh, fencing that would go on top of that for safety, additionally, we have an automatic lock, uh, that is by remote, and we have a, a video camera that is going to be installed on the third floor as well for additional safety, so, we're, uh, the other thing that we have done on the roof deck, um, is we've created all the railings, uh, that sit directly on the, uh, deck at forty-two inches, so above what is regulation, which is thirty-six inches, uh, for that roof deck.
So what's, the knee wall's forty-two and there's something above the forty-two?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions? No, okay, anything we're missing? All right, can I get a, um, a, a motion to approve it as submitted, um, Adam makes the motion for a second, Mike makes the second, hold in favor, there you go, you're all set, sir.
All right, we're good to go with, for, all right.
Good to go.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it very much, thanks for your time, you're all invited.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have that same invite to the one before me, but.
Sounds like a mojito.
Thank you, guys, appreciate the thought.
Next up, the agenda is deliberation, public decision regarding, uh, the following business site plan application number two, three, four, B's and B's, special permit application number two, three, six, A, Grove Street Plaza LLC Harvest Restaurant Inc., close to establish new full-service restaurant in the first floor basement space for occupied by melting pot, propose to establish part-time seasonal use of the existing plaza, public plaza, um, area to accommodate outdoor dining in the new restaurant in the business at twenty Grove Street, and the general public decision deadline is, uh, June twenty-ninth, um, tw- twenty twenty-three, we've got, um, a revised resolution in our packets, um, some people got the whole thing, some people got part of it, we got another one today, um, that was on your desk, they made some, um, stuff on page, on page three, where it talks about indoor and outdoor, um, dining hours, and we'll get to that a little bit later, I think, um, just some cleanup stuff with regards to adding Clark Hill Homes, um, I just wanna note that, um, lighting, this is, in our, in our application on page three, number fourteen, they said there will be no change in exterior lighting in the plaza, they may add lighting to the tables, that's those little globes he's talking about.
Yeah.
If they wanna put in lighting or heaters or any of that stuff, they gotta come back to, first they're gonna get approved by ARB, and they're gonna come back to us too, right?
Correct.
So there's no, um, they call, it's called catenary lighting, is what they call it, the string lights are like this.
Yes.
Yeah.
This, uh, G seems to indicate that umbrellas, heaters, et cetera, requires ARB or more.
Correct.
Doesn't say that they've gotta come back to us.
They would have, they, it's, they're not asking for it, right? So what do we do there, Fred?
But do you want, well, the question is, do you want them to come back to you if there's, if they did say catenary lighting or some other type of lighting, or just let the ARB handle it?
They should come back, 'cause he stated us, straight, straight to us, that they're not doing any lighting.
Same for heaters and umbrellas.
Yeah.
Same for heaters and umbrellas.
There's no propane heaters, there's none of that stuff.
So take that off.
Yeah, 'cause we specifically asked them and they said no.
Okay.
Remember the part I brought up, I was in Europe and they had blankets on all the tables and whatnot, um, did we put in here, um, the dates of when the outdoor is supposed to be open, like October to May or May to October?
They said they wanted first of May to end of October, which was fine.
Is that, that was this one we said to Thanksgiving?
No, not to Thanksgiving, Halloween, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I, 'cause I, they wanted it narrower and I wanted to make it longer.
Yeah, you wanted it to Halloween.
Yeah, give them some time to sit out there.
I didn't know, was this one or?
Yeah, that, that was the one, put it in.
Yeah, we can add that.
So we're gonna say May first.
Made it in October.
October thirty-first?
Yeah.
It was May first up to.
Global warming, sit outside.
Right, and then what do we do with the hours, 'cause we've gotta bifurcate the inside and outside, yeah, they're there.
Under C, under C hours, the commission hereby approves the maximum hours of operation for outdoor dining for the restaurant as follows, eleven-thirty AM to ten, Monday through Wednesday, eleven-thirty to ten, on Thursdays through Saturdays, eleven AM to ten on Sundays.
Okay, the only thing I wanted to add about this, I was at, in, I was at Seymour's recently and I was also in Westport, what, what they do in Westport is, if you order a drink at, you know, nine fifty-nine from your waitress and you get your bill, or your server, you get your bill, you can sit there and finish it, you don't get kicked out of your chair, but the, the outdoor dining is supposed to be closed, so, if someone's still finishing their last sip, you're not gonna make them, you know, pick up and leave, they can stay there, but the, in, in Westport, in Westport, granted, it's just having issues with this stuff, like there's retailers that are suing the town because retailers are not allowed to have outdoor use and, and restaurants can, um, but that's really not our problem, but I just wanna make sure that we understand that someone's not gonna be told to get out of their chair at ten o'clock, right?
Correct.
But you should, you should get your bill and pay your bill by ten o'clock, so that technically the outdoor terrace is closed, but you can still finish whatever you're eating, your cup of coffee.
Clarify that?
We can clarify that in some way, shape or form. I mean, what, in, in Westport, what they maybe do is go inside and order a beer, and then once I went inside, I could bring it outside.
Just to ask, why do you have two bullet points for the same hours, Monday through Wednesday and then Thursday through Saturday, it's the exact same?
I think that's where they gave it to us.
Shouldn't it be Monday through Saturday?
I think they're just following what we did for the indoor.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, questions, comments, typos, scribners, errors on this one?
The only thing I noted, um, on number eleven on page three, we just wanna say that the commercial tenants on the Grove Street Plaza property are currently that, does it matter?
Where, where are you?
On the observation eleven.
Under parking?
No, just above parking, should we say property are currently flour, salt, water, bread and espresso neat?
That's fine, you can add that.
Do we even need to add it, I wasn't sure if it was like.
The other commercial.
It's part of ten, yeah.
Our flour, water, salt, bread.
Pretty saying add currently.
Or presently.
Oh, part of ten, I see, you're crossing out eleven.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, ten.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's.
Ten, right, those two.
It'll be the new eleven.
Are currently flour, water, salt, bread?
Present, yeah, currently, presently, that's okay.
Yeah.
Adam always wants to worry about if someone pulls this out four years from now.
Yeah, like, who are these people, there's nobody here.
And then if we could just take two minutes to go over the, the plan, that's a touch is exhibit two, so the way I count it, there are, um, eleven, two tops in the green area, which is twenty-two seats, then there's two tops, two two tops for four in the rear plaza section, so that's twenty-six total seats, and then the fours, there's four, four tops in the green plaza area in front of the restaurant, and then two inside the, um, the east plaza easement, we're not allowing any tables by us in the, in the plaza easement in front of the fountain, then we're just talking about behind the fountain, um, and that paragraph, did it get fixed where it said twenty-six, it said, um, twelve tables, six tables, and it back to twenty-four, did that paragraph gets, sentence get fixed?
That's a good question.
That was on an even page, I didn't see it. No, it was, it's another spot, no, it's gonna be in the, in the second here.
Maximum of four tables.
Yeah.
And twelve seats behind the fountain.
Yeah, so you backed that. Yeah, all right, that's what's on the plan, four seats, the, the only thing, just so we're, we're prepared, the, the, the board of selectmen may not approve the easement on here, okay, what Mr. Genovese said in the app, at the time, he said they may wanna move the easement to over here, so does anybody care if the easement goes from here to here and those tables stay there, and it, does the resolution have that flexibility, we don't wanna change this again?
The way, my recommendation to the applicant, and Bob Maslin, David Genovese, Shad Glassmeyer, it's, today's the end of June, the applicant doesn't even have permission to open or operate a restaurant.
It's not gonna happen for a long time.
It's not happening till pretty much a year from now, eleven months. It's not happening till pretty much a year from now, 11 months from now, or 10 months from now. My recommendation to them is, take this, whatever the commission approves. Your client seemed to be very reputable, knows what he's doing, knows how to operate a restaurant. Run it starting next May 1st. Then see how it goes. It might just be fine. If it isn't fine, we're here almost every Tuesday. Return to the commission and modify the plan, or change it, or change the easement, or whatever. But don't spin your wheels here before you're even open. Get up and running, run your operation. You're going to be a hit, you're going to do well. Then if there's a problem, come back.
So if the Board of Selectmen says no to the fountain area?
Can they just come back?
Just let her, just let her ride for a year and then.
That was my recommendation. Of course, most people don't take my advice.
No, a lot of people do. A lot of people do. Okay, that's fine. All right, so they may not even approve the red. If they don't approve the red, they still get 50 seats. The middle piece.
The yellow. Selectmen.
Okay, yeah. That's fine, this is fine.
But it'd be silly to, I mean, just, just as, as instruction, it'd be silly to move it to the side. Because the whole purpose of the public plaza is to access the fountain, right?
Right.
So if you move it to the side, you've accomplished nothing.
Right, so the plaza would be, would be here and there. And then so it goes, the plaza goes, like that, yeah.
I mean, why sit here and spin your wheels with unknown results, from board to board, back and forth?
Over eight seats.
Over, yeah, exactly.
Figure it out. No, we don't have that many tables outside, it's inside. The world won't end.
We're getting 50, but we're arguing over eight. It didn't make any sense to me either.
Okay, great. All right, we made a couple edits to it, right?
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve as submitted. Mike makes a motion, Adam makes a second, all in favor.
Done.
Great.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on down the road. Okay, what's up next? Coastal Site Plan Review Number 376 and Land Filling Regrading Application Number 551, RRE Holdings LLC, 244 Long Neck Point Road, propose to construct a 20 by 50 in-ground pool in the southern portion of the site and perform the daily site development activities within regulated areas, including the regreting of the property, installation, stormwater management, connection, and connecting the main residence and cabin on the property to San Terry Sewell Line and Long Neck Point Road. Hearing close on June 6th, 2023. This one just does not.
This is the pool with the septic underneath it.
This is this pool with the septic underneath.
They wanted to rotate it, didn't want to, we came back. They're not taking the septic dirt out of it, they're taking it up, then they're putting it back in.
Yeah.
You're like, why don't we send it to New, to New Jersey, and to Pennsylvania, to West Virginia?
In our packets, we got a.
Yeah, we got the resolution. They had the sequencing, which was the main concern about it.
Condition C is the key here.
Sequencing is the key thing.
Okay. Questions, comments, typos, scribbers, errors on this one?
No, looks good.
Okay, are we good?
Yep.
Looking for a motion to approve as submitted. Adam makes a motion. Mike makes a second, all in favor. All right, next item up for bid. Special permit application number 329As in Apple Site Plan, Town of Darien, 40 and 46 Great Island, propose to rent the stables and associated construction facilities on Great Island to an outside operator with specialized expertise necessary to run a full-service show stable for programmed activity, recreational use with specific restrictions and limits. The indoor and outdoor facilities include an 18-stall granite stable, indoor heated routing rink, and outdoor sand dressing ring, and a half-size polo fields, as well as numerous paddocks and riding trucks that comprise the facility. The operator of this facility would be a full-service show stable, offering full boarding and training of up to 23 horses, a routing lesson program, an animal therapy program, and a summer's children's program. Hearing close on June 20th, 2023. What I'd like to do on this one is take a sensitive meeting first, to see how many.
I am recused, so will you not have a quorum?
She can sit here, but she can't talk, right?
That would be one way to do it, certainly. I don't know if you want to do it in, in this case, but certainly.
Yeah, why don't we have her leave?
Well, you can't leave the room.
They don't have the quorum if she leaves, huh?
Yeah, she's allowed to, she's allowed to sit here to maintain the quorum, but not allowed to speak.
This might not be the right application to do that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll put it on for the 11th, just to be safe.
Well said. Okay, next item on the agenda is Coastal Site Plan Review Number 372 Flood Damage Prevention Application Number 436, Land Filling and Regrading Application Number 544, Michael and Kerry Ross at 17 Nickerson Lane, propose to construct a new six-bedroom single-family dwelling in a now vacant lot, construction of a new driveway and parking court patio in terrace areas, and a pool, and perform the site development activities, including the regreting of the property and installation of stormwater management. This is the house on Nickerson Lane where a couple neighbors came in, they're keeping the old dead, the, not the, the old forest on the north side of the property. The, the lot is very close to the, to the south side of the property with not a lot of landscaping. We went back and forth a couple times and redesigned the pool to get everything to fit. So it all fits.
They're looking at the big oak tree.
Yeah, they couldn't save the tree, they put the driveway in.
The only thing I would say about the oak tree is that at 24 Great Hill Road, that was another house where there was a big tree and the neighbors wanted to keep the tree, it was the biggest tree in the neighborhood, and, and we let them take it down. My big fear of keeping some of those old trees is someday, something's going to happen to the tree, and it's going to get by lightning and crash on the guy's house.
Well, it's his risk he's allowed to take, but they are, they are replacing it.
No, yeah, if we forced them to keep the house.
Oh, keep the tree.
If we force them to keep the tree, then something happens.
Especially if it's going to get damaged during when they build the driveway around it.
Right, exactly.
There's no way that tree that big isn't going to get impacted by the foundation of the house.
Right, and they're replacing it with a nice tree. I think they did a really nice landscaping plan there.
Except for the buffer off the driveway.
On the south side.
It always, it always amazes me, and I, I don't, I mean, I know it's the regulations, but it just bothers me when somebody has a blank slate, total blank piece of paper, and they, they don't account for, like, what we saw today was a very thoughtful staged design and buffer for the neighbors, and when you have an acre of land and you, a blank slate of paper, and you still go right to the, just a pet view of mine, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, that's, that's one of those issues where I don't know if the guy can back out of his driveway.
It is going to be an interesting driveway, because you loop around, then you have the front parking area, then you loop around into a garage that you, it's certainly circuitous, I guess would be the best word.
Do we, do we have a, a distance regulation for the driveway?
The driveway can go straight to the property line. You can go right to the property line.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, back, my thing is back to the garage.
Back out, you need 24 feet, and that's what they referred to earlier in the evening, is the way the parking design standards are in the regulations. So you have your garage, you need 24 feet, but as you start putting walls there, your first inclination is you don't want your car to hit the wall. So you get very hesitant on backing up. So it, what you find is those are difficult to get in and out of, so people don't even bother.
One, one thing that I would, would pose to the group is, you know, there are some cases where we suggest site monitors. And there was a lot of our questions, and a lot of the questions of the neighbors, and it, the answers were, any good, and any good construction guy can stage this, no problem, no problem. And that's great, but then maybe, because it is going to be a tight way to build your way out, and based on the neighbors coming out, I don't know, is that, is that, is this a, a project that would warrant some type of check-ins?
Were these the L-shaped retaining walls?
Yes.
Is that this project?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree with you 100%.
Yes.
I'd put a site monitor on there, yeah. Because we don't want them going on the neighbor's property. We don't want them doing all the stuff that the neighbors were claiming that they might do.
They're represented that, that absolutely can happen without, without question.
Yeah, I definitely hold them to it.
We did, we did a site, a self, we did a self-moderating site monitor recently.
The one we have most recently is.
68 Proud Island?
Uh, 2 Contemptment Island Road.
Yeah, whether it's just the general contractor's making, you know, I don't know, I don't know.
We could have the, you know, we've had the engineers be the site monitor.
Right.
Check in once every two weeks.
So in this case, it would be land.
They don't have to, like, hire a new person, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, but, but.
That's a great idea.
There was a lot of.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, we're good, that's a great idea.
Great.
Sold.
Sold. Okay, good. Hit it, hit it, dude. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, all right, staff ran a positive resolution on that one.
Will do.
Subject to those changes or stuff. Okay, next item on the agenda is approve of our minutes for April 18th, 2023, and June 6th, 2023. Those are not in our packets, you got them.
Last week, last week.
We probably got them in there somewhere. So want it, why do you, when you find them, just submit it. You want to go over yours? I don't have my.
I don't have any, they, they, this is fine to me.
Okay.
I have no.
You guys want to take a look?
Yeah.
We did ADUs, basically this, this one was the big ADU discussion.
Yeah, that was on page three.
Yeah, otherwise it was a quick, quickish meeting.
So we're doing the first ones first. Let's, let's talk about April 18th.
April 18th, it was the vet.
May 18th, Jersey.
ADUs. One, one thing that, I mean, these are minutes, so I can't go back and say something we discussed that wasn't discussed. But one thing I want to put out there before I forget, I was down recently in Westchester and I saw, you know, these fire scoops, these big, you know, you know, metal access stair, staircases up to second floors. And it really aesthetically is not, not something I'd want for this community.
We have those on Wakeboard? What's the street?
That's something I want to make sure we discuss when we get back to that. I don't, I don't think we brought that up at all, if there's any. But I digress.
That's on the ADU discussion. I agree with you 100%.
I don't think that's something we discussed, and I think it's something we need to contemplate.
Right, especially if you start cutting the houses, you know, when you can have it as part of the main structure, people are going to put it in an exterior access place, whether it's steel or wood.
Like, I want an unintended consequence like that to happen.
Commercial buildings only having one staircase would be gross, not two, so it's fine with me.
Didn't this come up?
It's common in Germany.
We had a conversation.
I don't know, Mike, that's a good question.
And I, I felt like it was prohibited by the regulations in residential zone.
They exist on Wakeboard Street today.
Check out exterior stair access.
Yeah, please.
And they're all over West, they're all over Rockland County, because all those houses are cut. Okay, so any, this is, glad you looked at this one, I'm going to do, run on this one first.
Yeah, I was just going to show this to you, because this is on. See if you want to read that for the next one.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Hit your stomach?
I may.
Somebody's hungry.
Yeah, we're going to do ADUs again, man.
Yep.
I'm good with this.
So motion to approve the minutes for April 18th as submitted. Mike makes a motion. Amy makes a second, all in favor, for it off. Okay, the next item is the minutes for June 6th. We had a public hearing that night, and we had a general meeting. It was our first night talking, our second night talking about 95 Long Neck Point, where Amy accused herself, that's the house that is at the first house in Ziegler Farm, going from, I call it north, west to east, I guess. Second item was 9 Crane Road, that was a continuation of that one on June 6th. The next item was 244 Long Neck Point, we just discussed that one. Then that one, we went up, then the next item was 770, the jewelry store inside that little building, which is about 220 square feet. Then we saw the woman from the Darien Library to finish her basement. It was our next night of, remember to the business site plan for Baywater Corbin. We saw that Baywater Corbin came in that night, went over a bunch of different items. 40, 40 Morley Lane, we went over that one, relocate proposed pool, that's a pool that moved like a foot close to the house or something like that. ARB recommendations, did we ever finish that one, the blade signs?
No, we didn't. We're trying to bring that back to the commission sometime in July.
Liz Geiger asked me about that, too.
We, we did have a summer intern go out and take pictures. The problem is it was the super smoky day. So.
Sounds like they're going out again.
Go out again.
I, I will say this, the blade signs around that have gone up are tiny. So making them smaller seems like you're almost trying to eliminate them completely. The ones in the Corbin district are very small.
Corbin or, and federal realty?
Federal, the Corbin ones on the, on Corbin Drive are pretty small.
Corbin.
The compass one is big, but some of the other ones are like, the toy box one feels like it's like as big as my phone.
I think it's temporary. Toy box moving back eventually.
You think so?
Yeah, I know so.
Oh, well, even the ones that, the ones that are above it are certainly, you know, because they've got the new signage up there.
Yeah, he's going, he's going over to Darien, he's going over to the new one, he's going to be on the, the water feature. The next item on this agenda was then our next night of deliberations only on Southern Sedgwick. We went over the blue sheets and a bunch of different items. Jeff Ball was not there that night. We talked about the two zoning changes that they requested. I think we're all on the same page on that one. We also talked about the negative report from ARB. And then the commission, we asked about the dumpsters and the bike racks. Then we had the business site plan discussion for Grove Street, which we finished. 12142 near Warner Lane, a resolution from that guy, 53 Camp Avenue, you can't change that. Well, then we talked about the jewelry store, we finished, we discussed that, then I gave you a challenge report. I think that was the night after the fair share stuff went through. Questions, comments, typos, scribbers, errors on this one? No? Motion to approve as submitted. Adam makes a motion. Amy makes a second, all in favor, done. Any other business? Require two or three majority, I bet you have no other business. Our next meeting is July 11th, we have next week off, which is July 4th, conduct everybody. Then we have the 7th, the 18th off. 18th is still off?
18th is off.
So far, so good, I don't know.
And then Wednesday, we're having a Zoom meeting.
July 1st.
I gave all the junior guys.
So 11 is a pretty busy night.
11 is a busy night, okay, then we have July 25th, we might have that August 1st, which could be virtual, you okay with that? Okay. And then after that, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Mike always makes a motion to adjourn. And then Adam makes the second, all in favor.
Amy just wants to stay here.
Amy makes second, she's going, when am I going to make a copy again?